Good evening, everyone, and welcome. This meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
...the special meeting notice dated June 13, 2022, setting forth the date, time, and location of this special meeting. And a revised notice dated June 16, 2022, changing the meeting location was also a notice. Both notices were properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are in the back of the room to your right and left, and one behind the council dais here. And that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could we have the roll call, please? Ms. Allen. Ms. Hairston. Ms. Little.
Here.
Mr. Miniger. Ms. O'Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Vartan.
Present.
President Fox.
Here.
Hey, and if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The flag's over there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A special closed session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published special closed session agenda. Please be advised that this council meeting is being broadcast live on Comcast Channel 34 and 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV, Comcast 34, 36, and Verizon 30 and 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern. Clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and permit to all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So I want to start with a few announcements. We've made a few changes to the schedule. The first change is that we will be, tonight, we will be opening with an ordinance to introduce the redevelopment plan amendments. Those will go to the Planning Board on the 27th of June. But then we will vote, we will hold our final vote, hearing and vote, in September, on September 13th. So we will not have the... So we will not have a July 19th meeting. We will also be putting off the consideration of the redevelopment agreement until the fall. So with that, let me just quickly go through, we're doing this process a little differently tonight, so I just want to let everyone know how we're going to do this. The first thing we're going to be, we're only addressing the redevelopment plan amendments tonight. These do not bind the city or commit us to act. The process is an ordinance that introduces these amendments, and then a resolution that refers it to the Planning Board. Then on June 27th, the Planning Board will hold a meeting, and we'll hear comments on whether the amendments to the redevelopment plan are consistent with the master plan. And after that determination, then we'll come back on September 13th for a special meeting where we will, where council will vote on those...
Have the hearing.
We'll have the hearing and then vote. So tonight, we're going to start with a public comment period. And then, in the interest of getting us all home by midnight, we're going to try this time. So I ask everyone to please keep their comments brief, as close to three minutes as you can. I'll give you a little leeway, but I think we all need to catch up on our sleep after last week. So with that... Yes, go ahead. You need your mic on. We're working on it.
The soundboard, oh, good. Testing. So just so everyone understands, tonight, a little feedback. This evening, people are free to make comments on anything during a public comment, and you can speak on this, the ordinance, but understand that your comments tonight are not part of the record. The record will commence first at the Planning Board, which will start tomorrow. They'll have a hearing tomorrow on their review of this ordinance. This is just an introduction.
Matt, they're having a hearing on the 27th.
Oh, I'm sorry, next Monday.
Yeah.
The 27th. And thereafter, if you want your comments to be part of the public record, there'll be a formal hearing, and that will be the meeting on September 13th before the City Council. So you're free to speak tonight, but your discussion points tonight will not be part of a record. The record starts again before the Planning Board, and then ultimately, when there's a hearing before this council on the 13th of September.
Thank you, Mr. Jacoby. Okay, so back to what I was saying. So after the comment period, council will be introducing the ordinance to amend the redevelopment plan. The plan amendments are set forth in a memo that was included in the council packet, as well as the redlined version of the plan. And that was posted on June 14th. It was discussed and presented at the June 15th meeting, and many of you had an opportunity to ask questions at the June 15th meeting on these, on this set of amendments. We will be adding one more amendment, which is to remove residential units from the allowable uses in Sub District 4. And that was as a result of comments that we received from residents. That means that only Sub District 3 will have residential units, and those will be capped at 133 units for the entire redevelopment area, all four subdivisions. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Welcome, everybody. I know last time, at our last meeting, which it seems like it was just yesterday, I asked everyone to be respectful, and I just want to thank you very much, first of all, for taking the time and energy to look into this, to email us, and to be here. Just, not just tonight, but on last Wednesday. And I also want to thank everyone for being so respectful to each other and to members of council. We really appreciate it. I also appreciate all the, everyone who spoke, who said, "Thanks for all your hard work." We're your neighbors, and we live here, too. So I do appreciate that very much. We are listening, as I hope you are getting a sense by changing the dates of things. We are listening, and we are listening to those of you who have emailed and attended this meeting. We also get comments from people that don't attend, and who actually are in favor of the project. So we're balancing everything, and believe me, there are people out there who are in favor. You've posed questions, and I agree with you that answers are needed. We need time to get the right answers and to make sure that this project is the best deal for Summit. And council obviously agrees, because we're not voting on the redevelopment plan until the fall, and we are certainly not voting on the redevelopment agreement, which sets out the actual details of the project until the fall. I don't want to vote on this project. Well, I don't vote, so, but I don't want them to vote on this project in the summer. But what I do want to know, sooner rather than later, is whether the redevelopment plan amendments are consistent with the master plan, and that's what the Planning Board will look into next Monday. I had a lovely, lovely conversation with, many of you will know her, remember her, some of you will not, with Mayor Janet Whitman yesterday, who called to say, "I hear things are going a little bit crazy in Summit." And I said, "Well, yes, indeed." But, but I said, "It's complicated, and we're all going to try to do the right thing. Everyone lives here, we want to do the right thing." She urged me to urge the residents and the council to understand that it's important to communicate, to negotiate, and compromise. And those were her three words of wisdom, and I feel like I stand on strong shoulders as the mayor, after her, many years after her. So I hope we'll have a productive evening, I'm sure we will. And again, I thank you all for your participation.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to open the public comment period. There's my gavel. Okay. Come on up. Please state your name, address, and please try to keep it to three minutes. And if someone else has already asked the question or comment, I would ask you to please refrain from making that comment. So go ahead.
Don't want to echo what Mary Curtis said, but I don't. Thank you for your input. For you, for your service, I am impressed. I, I, anybody here, there'd be a whole lot more people up there if they voted that way. As opposed to after, for many years throughout my career, I've seen developments in council credit install services. You can't over-counsel this kind of conflict. From our standpoint, with the X-Men project, most recently Elizabeth Rosenthal Hillside, where I finished my career, supported the development process while we develop the very large parking complex on the town of Rosenthal Hills. All of those projects, it is silent in these capacity, those particular units. This project, in my estimation, while I do agree that the project should move forward with a lot of alteration, property does need to be redeveloped. If the majority of folks here publicly do agree with you that the project does need to be redeveloped, however, not with the scale that it is seen, it just doesn't fit the paradigm of a community. One thing that I would like to see moving forward, as you continue your negotiation process, backfinding process, I would love to see a cost analysis. If a property was sold to a private developer, the city is still maintaining a certain degree of control because certain degree of control with density, time, and other factors, as it will in this process, by going before the zoning agreement. Additionally, one item that I haven't heard yet, the parking garage that would be proposed for postal office parking. I haven't heard any costs associated. Maybe I missed that? A lot of information out there. If I missed it, somebody can get it, I can set these three. And I think that that's also an important factor as we weigh all the analysis of the financial fact. And lastly, your willingness of this, your constituents, citizens of the City of Summit, and just your process, should never, ever, ever be construed as a sign of weakness. Quite frankly, that should be viewed as a sign of strength. It's one that everybody should embrace. It's okay to say, "Hey, wait a minute, you know what, we view it differently." And I certainly hope that at the end of this process, when the citizen, the folks upon the dais, that you do understand that we're just through the process as you are, and want nothing but...
Thank you, Mr. Locke. Um, Mike? I'm getting a report from, about the audio, you know? Okay. Go ahead, come on up, Mr. Bennett.
Good evening. May I raise your hands to the council? This has been a minute, eight great hours, we can't be beat. Up to the purpose of remark, by saying some comments I've heard you heard from reading so. Just to be, I've been attending to you on the part of some public servants, and this is myself from... This record has no place in public discourse, I'm sure, speaking myself and members of the whole people who are sitting here. I would send that as a kind of a reach of appreciation. As we talk about this impact, I would argue that we need to understand the implications of before you vote on introducing a change to the development plan that is intended for planning for. Last week, I saw myself short. A question from Dr. Powell, and he says that the impact handled by the first gentleman was common, was in 1978. It's correct, this report was first published then, but it has been material from 2012 by the hand of Francis. So I'm sorry to go to the longer, reach the ancient document, such as the hearsay rule. The new information is probably not enough to change Dr. Powell's mind, and it is clear that this document's been, this first act of the multiplier, now, this document's impact. But we await the written report from Dr. Dr. Powell Thomas, including the report from Richard D. Redden from this hall. There's no wonder that this is Sir Redden, who is not acting as a pseudonymology, now, this four, that this is the lowest, this impact on the city. This high annual number of 677,205 dollars is the council, and close to my number of 658,638. Once we have this, these reports, we may choose to have our experts to evaluate them. This set is something that can be taken with Dr. Powell, that Dr. Powell can assist with now, but wants to be the project, very conclusion, close to the current form. And that's because definitely one of the things that's lost, the whole of state, maintain professional standards. And there are areas where experts can't exercise discretion. So I said last week, the impact analysis should have happened years ago, and now council will vote on introducing the development plan and sending it to the Planning Board. Your report of, for of this one track is available to council for public review. And I would gratify you here for the final vote. It's going to be postponed until September, and I'm calling council to, uh, state it as postponed until September. And it's ready for the fact that it is time to properly execute. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. So I understand we're having a little bit of technical difficulty at home with people hearing. So, Mike, I'm going to let you get this sorted out before we get our next commenter up here. Are we ready now? Okay. All right. Would the next commenter like to come up? You don't have to raise your hand, you can just come up and sort of line up. You guys just work it out. You can line up behind, it's okay. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for having this here. This is a great opportunity for you.
If you need to move the microphone a little closer, yeah.
Okay.
Better.
And thank you very much for having it here and allowing all these people to support what I am here for. We are delighted that you have come up with something. However, our biggest objection is the building, the size of the building. We have seen things where they have two buildings, which makes a lot more sense. By the way, I am Ruth MacPherson, M-A-C-P-H-E-R-S-O-N, at 90 New England Avenue, Number 1. And I would just like to urge all of you on the council to take time this summer and to look at the video that was done at the rally last week. There were wonderful speakers, they had a lot to say. What they had to say made a lot of sense. So I am begging all of you to look at the video, think about it, and thank you for having the meeting in September. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcus, can you hear me? Marcus McNamara, 53, Morris Avenue, M-C-N-A-M-A-R-A. Uh, just a few real quick questions, I'll be done. Have you toured any of the Toll Brothers properties that they've completed? Have you actually gone in and looked at them and talked to people? Um, let's see. What measures have been put in place if there's work schedule delays? How will that be dealt with? My biggest problem is, when I think of this project, I think it's huge. But I think of the Morris Avenue Bridge, and you know how long, I know we didn't have anything to do with it, it was county, but if you remember how long that took, and if you look at it now, it's like a jigsaw puzzle to get up there. You can only go on one side, and that's what I want to avoid happening to here. I definitely think there should be a redevelopment. I think it should be tasteful, I think it should be consistent with the character of Summit, smaller. You know what I mean? So I know when initially we were told that we needed this, it was because that taxes would go up and that there was an agreement with Overlook, and Bristol-Myers Squibb that there was a tax reduction, or they did something where they're paying less taxes. And I see the amount of work that's being done now. Is there a projected, uh, how much taxes they will be increased? I think it was a $2 million difference from 2000-something that they were paying a year. So do we have a projected outcome of what, after that work is completed, what the taxes will go back up to? And when was the last time a full-town traffic study was actually conducted? I remember Jen Electric was doing a lot of stuff. I had a buddy who worked for them who was allegedly like a traffic genius, but that had to be at least 10 years ago. I think all the traffic signals and lightings, they don't seem to be in sync. If I drive through town, it seems like I hit every yellow light every day. Like, literally, honestly, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not making a joke. And, and that's really it. That's it, thanks.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to let, before we start another comment, I'm going to let the mayor respond to a couple of those things.
You can stay there, Deborah, no worries. Mr. McNamara, thank you. I remember clearly the railroad, the Morris Avenue Bridge. And it was actually, the project was done by New Jersey Transit. So frankly, now six and a half years into being mayor, I'd rather work with Union County than New Jersey Transit. But that said, yeah, it took a long time. And part of it was that the governor at the time shut down all construction, if you remember, for about five months. So that was a problem. But, you know, we got there, we did not have any control, you're right. But the bridge was falling apart, and our ambulances and fire trucks could not, could no longer traverse that bridge because it was in such bad shape. So we had to do it, or New Jersey Transit did. I have not, and I don't know about my council colleagues, if they've gone into Toll Brothers properties. I've gone into some Toll Brothers properties, but I have not been into those that are the joint venture between L&amp;M and Toll, except for the Haynes Building in Newark. And there are, it's because Toll Brothers, I think I've mentioned before, 10 years ago started a whole different vein where they were not doing the huge projects, that they are doing a huge one right now in Chatham, but that's strictly Toll Brothers. But this new arm of Toll Brothers, they make joint venture projects with smaller creative companies. So I don't know. I haven't been, but it's a good question, and I would make it my business this summer to find one and go. As far as the Celgene property, first of all, that property, when we had the tax reduction, that property was owned by Celgene. So I just don't want to say that BMS, Bristol-Myers Squibb is not doing what they're doing, because they bought it long after Celgene negotiated that tax reduction. It was reduced because they had purchased it for quite a large, quite a smaller number than it had been valued. At the time, large office parks post-2008 were not selling at all. So they were able to buy it at quite a reduced rate, and they received a reduced tax rate. Now, what Bristol-Myers Squibb is doing right now on the West property, they are doing, and we will, it will increase our tax rolls. Bristol-Myers Squibb has sold the Eastern property to a developer, and that's, we don't even, we don't know what's going on there, but they're basically, presumably, they want to use it for, you know, what's currently there in terms of office building, biomedical research, and so forth. But that's private property, so we don't have the right to tell them what they can do unless they want, if they want to make changes, they'll go to the zoning board and the planning board. So I don't know how much we're going to get from Bristol-Myers Squibb on the Western campus. I can find out, and if you wouldn't mind sending me your email. My email is nradis@cityofsummit.org, and I can find out what the estimation is.
So one other thing I'm going to ask Mr. Marazidi to answer the question that Mr. McNamara had about work schedule delays, because there is a very detailed set of provisions in the redevelopment agreement. You lost your microphone, though, right?
So the question, I think I can be heard, the question was about the schedule and timing and what happens about delays. As a component of this whole process, we're in the process of preparing a redevelopment agreement that will set forth lots of details about this project. And one of them is a project schedule that will identify the timeframes when things are to be done. An unforgiven breach of the project schedule is a default, a event of default, which could subject the developer to termination. There is, of course, a force majeure provision, if there are issues that cause delays beyond the control of the developer, there's a time extension there, and that may be what happened with Morris Avenue Bridge. But that is one of the many details that is being worked out and will follow the ultimate decision on the redevelopment plan.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Oliver.
Yep. Deborah Oliver, 37 Tulip Street.
Could you just pick up a little bit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hello?
Yep, that's good.
So where do we stand with the Broad Street West redevelopment project? Well, I have a brief visual presentation that I think captures the community process so far. This is what represents the size of the Sub District 3 building that conforms with Summit's existing zoning code and could be built without amending the 2019 redevelopment plan. This represents the 72-units, four-story, 60-foot maximum height, and shorter than 480-foot-long building that is allowed and was agreed to by prior councils. This is what a unified chorus of 1,556 petition signers and 1,100 residents for Summit Facebook followers have been consistently and patiently asking for council to produce for four months. And this is the one proposal that council has shown us these four long months. This represents the 140-unit, 65-and-a-half-foot-tall, five-story, 480-foot-long behemoth that does not comply with our existing zoning code and that the redevelopers, Toll, L&amp;M, have been pushing council to approve. And that approval requires a significant amendment to our redevelopment plan, our zoning code. And that is the amendment that would be introduced tonight. And this represents the parking, the parking for Sub District 3 that has never been sufficient. And this represents the parking, the parking for Sub District 3 that has never been sufficient. 160 spaces short of the required parking for this. But don't worry, said council a month ago, we have been listening to you. We will have a town hall before the summer, and there's plenty of opportunity for residents to see all the changes that we are working on in response to your concerns. But on June 1st, the promised town hall was revealed to be a fiction, and instead, on June 6th, a news release was sent out informing residents of a suddenly scheduled regular council meeting only nine days away, at which council and its experts would unveil the revisions to this that would reflect, quote, "the extensive public feedback over the last few months." So last Wednesday night, June 15th, a summer night, when many residents were already away, and indeed, council members were away, residents were crowded into three different rooms at City Hall and strained to see small LED screens showing the revisions that, quote, "reflected the extensive public feedback." And what was shown? Ta-da! This is what was shown. Do you see the changes? No, of course not, because they are too minuscule to spot, except for wait, parking, which is now way over here. It is still completely inadequate, but now it can be located far, far away. At the meeting last Wednesday, financial justifications for this project were also proven to be incomplete and inaccurate. So the questions are, why are you pushing this project so hard? While I'm delighted to hear that the vote on this has been moved to September, the meaningful change would be to abandon the amendment that you're getting ready to resolve, to propose And to go, take the time to go back to the drawing board and start with something that looks like this.
Hi. Kelly Ica Valley, 151 Colonial Road. First of all, thank you for all of your volunteerism to this town. First, second of all, I do agree, like the majority of the people in this room, that something does need to be done on the site where the development is being spoken about. But also, I agree, it is not the scale and scope that is being set forth at this time. I have lived in this town for over 50 years. I went to the Summit schools. I came back here to raise my family. I have sat and listened and tried to understand how this is going to be a good thing for Summit, and I can't seem to find anything positive to stand behind this development in its current form. After last week's revisions came out, I finally felt the need to show up. I just was, I had given up. The notion that this developer will be given a special accommodation by the city for the residents who live in this development, and they will be able to park on the street around and near this development, makes it incredibly unsafe for our children and the people of this town. We already have so many signs up around town telling us to slow down. People are getting hit by cars, little kids crossing the street, people are now going to be parking on the streets. It will make it even more dangerous. We also have residents in this town that can't even park in their own driveways if they have more than two cars, if they have a small driveway, and they are not given the ability to ask for a special permit to park on the street near their house. But this development is being given a special accommodation. I would urge all the people sitting up here to take a step back. It is not too far. And go back to the drawing board and put together something that is more in line with the guidelines and the zoning right now. We, as citizens, have to adhere to the variance in rules that are set forth when we try to do something on our own homes. This developer should be held to the same standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ica Valley. I just want to respond to one of your comments about the parking. I think there's a misunderstanding of what the purpose of the on-street parking is, a measure to replace the 59 spots that are in the Chestnut Street Lot, which are currently used by resident commuters, not residents of the building, but residents, current residents of Summit who commute. You get a resident commuter permit, or also employees can get permits and use those spots. So this is to create long-term spots on the street for those people. It's not for the residents of the building. There are 140 parking spots in the building for the residents. So I just wanted to clarify that. That remains to be seen, but those spots are, they will have to get a permit like everyone And I think we'll have to figure that. I don't know the answer to that.
Yet another reason why we're delaying this vote until the fall.
Good evening. My name is Mary Zimmerman. I live at 29 Edgewood Road in Summit. I've been here quite a while, and I want to thank you for all your time and effort to our wonderful city of Summit. The work you are doing is not easy, and I've watched a lot of mayors and council people over the years work very hard for our city, and I thank you for that. So I'm going to go back, because Mayor Radis, you spoke to Janet Whitman, you said, over the weekend, a great lady who listened when New Jersey Transit decided to come to Summit to build an obnoxious-looking parking garage that was green and looked like a prison. It got approved, surprisingly, and then citizens spoke up. And Janet Whitman called us together, along with members of the council, to hear our concerns. And I was in that group. The green ugly building was the problem. But the other problem was that New Jersey Transit wanted to control not only the building, but all the fees that would be collected in and around the train station. Also, because the building was ugly, it did not look like the other buildings around the green, which was very important to the city of Summit and the citizens. That project failed, and Mayor Whitman, along with council, selected a group of people to redesign a parking garage, which you see today, which encloses the green, but also is representative of what the green should look like. This is important for us when thinking about building a building here in Summit that we look like Summit. The new design took in the entire area, including the post office and the station and the Y. That was very important, so it made a complete community look. The design of the building that has been proposed does not compete with the architecture in the area around the town. The design of the building that is being proposed, in my opinion, is a factory that has been refurbished to look like a loft building, loft apartments. Now, Toll Brothers tried to build in Summit. Solarno Dwayne, at one time, was going to sell their property, and they were going to build apartment buildings down there, condos, on the Solarno Dwayne property. Maybe some of you remember that. 2008 happened, financial crisis. Toll Brothers walked away. I think it is a mistake, on behalf of the community that has always been about excellence, to approve a development so out of character with our community. You are all hard-working council people. You give great deal of town, time, great deal of time to Summit, and I truly admire all of you. I've worked with a number of you in the years past, and I really treasure that. I do not give away, I'm asking you to do not give away the design decision to people who do not understand our city. Create a committee of concerned citizens to replace the property with an excellent look that is in keeping with the city of Summit and the design of the city of Summit, which is classical, which is colonial, which encloses, is an image of our town. And I thank you for your time.
Do we have any more comments? There's some seats up front, for those of you who are standing in the back, if you want to come up front.
You ready for me?
Yep, go ahead.
We're always ready for you, Al.
Al Dill, 16 Montrose, former councilman. That brings back so many memories.
Mr. Dill, can you speak into the microphone?
That brings back so many memories, what she just spoke about, because I was involved in a number of those projects. I was involved in this project. I spearheaded this building in refurbishment. I was involved when we saved Wilson School, the old City Hall, all the things we did so Summit would have the property it needed, the things it needed, and we kept that look. I hadn't planned to speak tonight, but when you mentioned Janet Whitman, I first came on to council, 1989, first council meeting I ever went to. What was on the agenda? We're going to buy the post office, and we need more parking. And you can see where all that went. I have some real grave concerns. I've said them before, but I've tried to avoid coming. I didn't plan to speak tonight. But what she was talking about just rang a bell. You know, you have an opportunity here for a real legacy, to do something on that property that fits the town, people will be proud of. Taxes aren't going to make a big difference. I just can't understand your vigor for living and dying with this project and this company. You have a great opportunity here. Take the opportunity. I know you're frustrated. I know you're aggravated. Marjorie, I'm looking at your face. You're contorted. You don't want to hear what I have to say. I understand. I have, I have been there.
You know what? I'm sorry. Excuse me, Al, may I interrupt?
Yes, please.
I think, I think making personal caricatures like that is really uncalled for. Councilwoman Fox is working extraordinarily hard, night and, no, may I please finish? Night and day.
Okay.
And she's making a face, who knows why? She's, maybe she's got, you know, a pain in her side.
Because she's looking at me, and she's going, I understand it, because I, Laura, I understand.
Make your comments about the project, please, and leave it at that.
Okay, I'll make them about the project. All right, I don't want to start a ruckus here, but what I'm saying is, you have an opportunity to really do something for this town that will be the greatest thing that's been done in the last 15 years. And I think you're wasting that opportunity. You've heard everything about the different, the buildings, the size, the parking on the streets. I can't even believe you're considering it. And you know how I feel about removing that parking lot. I think you're making some big mistakes here. So just think about it. You've got the whole summer. Look at some other plans. See what else you might be able to do, and you could do the greatest thing we've seen in years. So I wish you a lot of luck, and I appreciate the hard work, because I've been there. I did it for 12 years. More projects than you people are doing now, believe me. So just keep continuing, but think about changing it. You don't have to live or die with this project. We didn't do it on a number of projects. Have fun. I might be able to make it to the magic fountain.
Maryland Falls, 118 Prospect Street, PFALTZ. I've lived in Summit 62 years. My husband had a law practice downtown, and we are property owners downtown. I recognize the needs for development in the area of Broad Street West and recognize the many long hours you guys have put in with these plans. I do not believe these plans are in the best interests of the city for three reasons: for density, for traffic, and for parking. These three issues bundled together in the current development plan will irreparably change the town, pushing it towards an urban apartment dense city, more traffic and traffic lights, circling cars looking for parking. Shoppers and restaurant-goers park where they shop and eat. If Summit becomes too inaccessible in these terms, patrons will go elsewhere. Beware the unintended consequences of launching a new business district with minimum parking. I came here tonight to urge you to rethink and pause, and thank you for that. I do think that a majority of the town is still not fully aware of Phase 3, and I would hazard a guess that most have no idea of Phase 1 and 2 and 4. And so I think it is extraordinarily important that the town understand fully all the plans, and thank you for delaying the vote.
Greetings, council. Thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. I'm Elliot Fishman, 34 Webster Avenue, Summit resident for 15 years. I'm here with my two sons, who I hope will be lifelong residents of Summit, because we love this town. About a year ago, I was heavily involved in another community activist group. I joke to some of my friends, I'm the reluctant community activist. I'm actually kind of an introvert, but here I am, speaking before all of you. And in the case of Primrose, there was an out-of-town developer who wanted to develop a daycare center right in the middle of a residential neighborhood, which was totally out of scale, out of character, and out of scope with the feel of Summit. They wanted zoning variances, and it was fundamentally inconsistent with the master plan. The group we assembled was over 200 households who attended meeting after meeting for almost a year. And I think on the last Zoom call, there were over 120 people who spoke against it. So we had 200 people for the Primrose group, and the city officials and the planning board heard us loud and clear. In an historic 9 to 0 vote, the planning board voted down the Primrose development because it was fundamentally inconsistent with the scale, the scope, and the character of Summit. Now, there are some parallels to what's going on here. I might note that the activist group is over five times as large against this development as our Primrose, as our group was against Primrose. And again, the fundamental reasons that Primrose was voted down was because it was not like Summit, it was not for Summit, it was Sun. It was sun, foreign architecture, out of scale and out of scope, and just not in touch with the master plan. So I hope the lessons learned from the Primrose fight are remembered here, and I hope there's a consistent interpretation between that battle, which was successful, and the massive attempt of this community group to scale back, scale down, and realign this project to what is Summit. At the end of the day, we may be called Summit City, but we are a village. We're a close community. We're a suburban town with an urban center. We are not a metropolis. We are not Westfield. We are not Morris Town. We are not Montclair. And we don't want to be. Summit has a slower pace, a more relaxed feel, a friendlier manner, less congestion. Let's please keep it that way. Thank you for your time.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Mary Farrell. I'm at 117 Beekman Road. I just drove up from Washington, DC to be here tonight. I drove up from Washington, DC. I was at a convention for development. And one of the PowerPoint presentat, phases was to involve your community. And I did watch the Zoom call last week, and I was so impressed by the community outreach, the intellect, the resources that we have at our hands here. And as the council, I would urge you so diligently to reach out and use those resources. Use them to go investigate Toll and L&amp;M projects. You are a volunteer, but you could use the resources that are here at your disposal. I think it would go a long way to, I am in favor of this project, but it was also, this, if you reach out to the community, you'll engage them. It's a collaboration. I don't believe that the project as it stands now is what it should ultimately be. It's too large. It's too dense. There's so many things that are lacking. One other point I wanted to bring up. In watching the Zoom call, you talk about having park at parks and that you'll have art installed. Well, I live by Wilson Field. And there is neglected art in the park. And it's a disgrace, a disgrace to the artist. It's a disgrace to the town. And the town maintains it, so there's no reason why it should be overgrown and neglected. And my concern is, if something like this is put in the downtown area, will it remain beautiful and kept up? Since it is still a town property. And I just see this neglected. And I believe that was installed during two prior administrations. So there's no reason why it should be neglected the way it is. Thank you.
My name is Peter LaJoy. I live at 124 Canoe Brook Parkway, Summit, New Jersey. I'm very happy to see that the council has decided to adjourn this till the fall. But I think before you put it back on the agenda, a lot of work has to be done. A great deal of work has to be done. I've listened to all of the town folks speak, many of whom are extremely educated and well-respected in their fields. We haven't used them. We had a redevelopment plan that was adopted by this council, by a council, and put into effect with an ordinance based on the work of a lot of individual Summit citizens. Right now, we are just throwing that out in favor of recommendations of a number of consultants who make their money doing this. We do not need consultants to make money on the City of Summit, particularly when you consider what we're getting. $8 million is not a lot of money. $300,000, $600,000 a year is not a lot of money when you compare it to the tax rolls of the school system and this community. We are not being well compensated. And we haven't been well represented by the consultants and the professionals that are allegedly working for us but are actually working for the developer. Now, I've worked in this town, and I think the mayor knows it, for a lot of projects, particularly with the school system, because I thought they were very valuable. Those developments, those school projects involve the community. It involved members of the community. This project has not involved any members of the community. It was born during the pandemic. The argument was, we can't talk about it because we're negotiating in private. Maybe the city shouldn't be in this business. Just because the local housing redevelopment law exists doesn't mean it's right for Summit and doesn't mean the city council should be in the business of doing development. In my opinion, something should be done with those sites now that we're there. I wouldn't have gone in that direction, but we're there now. The site should be zoned properly. The property should be put to bid. Private sector developers should come in and be allowed to bid, and the property should be sold to the best and highest bid. We know that fair market value of property is determined when it's put on the market, it's exposed to the market, there are legitimate buyers coming to the market, and a value is determined. There's no market value determined here. There's just a number. There's a number that, I really don't understand it. I don't understand why the council needs it. It's not a large number to me, based on this budget that we have to live with. And if the problem is we're bumping up to the cap, well, maybe Summit may have to tighten its belt and live within the cap for a few years. I'm willing to do that. I've had to do that as a, as a family. And maybe Summit should do that. Now, beyond that, I really believe we need to go back to the original development plan. I probably have built more affordable housing than the combined age of everyone sitting up there, up in this dais. And I'm an advocate of it. I think we need to go back to this redevelopment plan. I believe that a couple of reasonably sized podium buildings, you could even put one in the parking lot behind the post office, along the numeric lines that the redevelopment plan originally anticipated. They can be properly built. They will create a nice streetscape. They will create the type of community you want to create. But this monstrosity, all I heard out of these consultants was urban, 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 urban. We do not need to be urban. We do not need to destroy. We do not need to destroy the unique character that is Summit with a cookie cutter building that is being built all over New Jersey, because it's very clear. A long time ago, we used to build single-family houses. Then we, we ran after land for townhouses. We can't do that anymore as builders. So now we're building these buildings. They are no different cookie cutter buildings than the single-family houses and the townhouses that many communities have fought for years. And that's what Summit's getting with this, this bill, with this building. I think it's time to go back to the drawing board. I think it's time to rethink this. I think it is time to involve talented people in this community to come up with a deal that works for our community, that doesn't work for a consultant, that doesn't work for Toll, and that doesn't work for a whole bunch of people that have no investment in this community. And I really believe that. So I ask this council to do some deep soul searching and go look at what your residents, your volunteers, put together that got completely turned upside down because somebody threw out this $8 million number. And I don't know that it's right for Summit. I don't know that it's good or bad. All I know is no one has proven to me with adequate reports and adequate financial reports and adequate demographics that it's the right number. And beyond that, to put parking on Morris Avenue and Broad Street is creating a severe health and safety problem for the City of Summit. And people know.
Mr. LaJoy, I'm going to ask you to wrap up, please.
I'm almost done.
No, it's, you're already at six and a half minutes. Please wrap up.
Thank you. I will wrap up. Look, I'm done. I'm almost done. This creates a health and safety problem. And Mr. Giacobi knows that if anything a court listens to when it throws a project out is health and safety. Okay? Health and safety even beats affordable housing. So I, I don't think the proper studies have been done as to traffic. I think to eliminate travel lanes on Morris Avenue and Broad Street create havoc in one of the, one of the most traveled parts of Summit. Thank you very much. Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate it. I appreciate your time.
Good evening.
Good evening. Robert Burns, 128 Maple, resident for 36 years. My wife and I lived there for 36 years, raised our children. Wonderful town. I didn't come up here with rehearsed questions or comments. I certainly have found the last meeting, six and a half hour meeting, was incredibly instructive, and I was very, very proud of many of the residents of Summit and their analysis of the project. I am not against redevelopment and proper land use, so I'm not going to repeat some of the concerns. Mine's going to be very specific. I'm retired, commercial real estate banking. And one of my concerns, it was triggered by a comment Dr. Powell made at the last meeting. And please correct me if I'm wrong, that in order to get the developer or developers involved, we basically have to enhance their equity return without the bond financing, as per Dr. Powell, it was about 7% return, which is not viable. With the bond financing, it sort of approached a threshold of about 17%. Again, I may be wrong. So I guess basically what I'm saying is, Summit is underwriting the equity or the equity return on behalf of Toll Brothers L&amp;M. What are we going to get in return? Are we going to have people dedicated to analyzing the financing of the development? Not the construction financing, because that's typically recourse, but the takeout financing, which will be the repatriation of their equity, whatever that amount is, is 21 million or whatever it is, in order to get their return. So when they refinance, based on a stabilized apartment complex, will they just totally have whatever return they can get, walk away, or sell it, or, or just refinance it, stay in place? What I'm concerned is that Summit's performance and Summit position may be pretty diluted. And I would like to see if we can somehow get a better return for Summit if it has a sale or refinance of the property down the road. It could be 10 years, whatever. So that we, we look like we have our, we have our pencils on the paper here. And I think one of the other comments that came up, and again, I could be wrong, where the cap rates were used were more cesser cap rates. Well, those are very conservative cap rates. And institutional cap rates on an institutional project like this envisioned would be much lower, so therefore a higher return and a more likelihood of a bigger return on equity for Toll Brothers L&amp;M. So I just would like to make sure that there is some dedicated people or group to reviewing the financing to the extent that we're allowed legally under the development agreement to make sure that we at least we could have a subordinated participation or something to enhance Summit's return and the return of all of our money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. And definitely one of the things that we need to really drill down on is that exact concept.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you so much for your time this evening. I know, having watched everything online and trying to follow up everything with what's going on. My name is Ashley Wiggins, W-I-G-G-I-N-S. I live on 52 Parkview Terrace, over by Memorial Field. On my way over here this evening, I was impressed to see that, took me two speed bumps and two new four-way stops just to get here. You guys implemented lots of safety, lots of patience with trying to keep all the roads that are heavily populated with students, you know, a lot of the residents who want to be safe during walking. So I, I'm a graduate here of Summit High School as well, so I'm probably maybe the youngest person that is speaking besides Mr. Vartan himself. So I am a communications major. I would love to see more communication. I was disappointed to see that there was very little communication during most of COVID. I found most of my information through social media and the Nextdoor app. If there was any other way to get communication out to residents who are unable to get out, who maybe aren't on social media, perhaps lay out both pieces of information to them. I think that would be extremely helpful to them. So I've also worked in Williamsburg, in Brooklyn. So I've seen the work of the Toll Brothers. And perhaps that would be a good opportunity to understand more about the project that's going up. It's huge. It's terrible. I'm, I'm against it. You know, I think after Hurricane Sandy, we lost so many trees. You know, we need more trees within our, our town. I'm also concerned, as someone who graduated from the public school systems, what will the impacts be on the public schools? Where will some of these residents, if they have children, where will they be going? You know, will it go to all within one district? And then, you know, I was one of the largest graduating classes of '06, so I just wanted to kind of understand what is the long-term plan. I also see myself, you know, hopefully one day have a family and have my kids go to school here. Also, you know, the traffic pollution. I, you know, everyone has been saying that there's just more and more cars. You know, there's less and less parking. I, myself, unfortunately, try to shop downtown, but am pushed more towards other towns like Berkeley Heights and New Providence, which allows me to park more freely, not having to run into issues where I'm circling around for hours trying to find a simple spot to go to, like, the Summit Diner. So there's just like little things like that that I know you guys have been taking the time to consider. And, you know, I am concerned about long-term, about like commuters as things decide to get back up into, commuting back into New York City. A majority of people who live here, you know, commute into New York City, so I am concerned still about like the parking. You know, we want to thrive downtown. I've loved that there's been more like street shutdown to allow people to walk and enjoy and be a part of, of the town. So if there's anything that I could do to be a part of the committee and help with communications, I would love to be that consultant and help, you know, provide some canvassing. Just additional information, I think, would be very helpful for more people. Not everyone has the time to come and be part of these meetings. So if there's anything I would like to offer, like my time, I'm very proud to be a resident here, and I'm proud to be able to voice my opinion and have you guys take the time to listen.
Ms. Wiggins, I just wanted to reply to a couple of things. First of all, thank you very much. And I'm so glad you moved back to Summit after you,
Yes.
you know, went off to college and back. A couple of things. One, everybody here should know this if you don't already. To get information from the city, the best way is to go to the city website and hit on the button that says notifications. And then it has a long laundry list of things that are, it might be of interest to you. All you do is click them off. You do it one time. You put in your email address or your text. You click off the things, and every single time there's a bit of information from the city about that subject, you will automatically get a push notification. So you don't, nobody should have to go to the website every day and check and find out what's going on in the city. But if you have But if you have certain areas you're interested in, that's one way of getting it. I've been in Summit for 33 years. I so miss the independent press that would come every Thursday. It was a reliable source of information. It was just, it's very hard. So yeah, but that is the best way for notification. Couple of different things. Trees, yeah, everybody was really terribly sad about all the trees that came down at Sandy. We are very fortunate that with efforts in the city and Union County, over four years, we're planting 1,000 trees in Summit, which is the start. Everybody, but that's on city property and the 10-foot right-of-way in front of your homes. We'd love to have people plant trees in their own backyards, too. Schools, there have been two demographic studies done, one by the city and one by the Board of Education. Anywhere between K through 12, 32 to 36 children are expected from this building. I've had conversations with the superintendent. They feel strongly that those students will be able to be absorbed without building any more buildings, any more space in those buildings. But remember, this city understands, everyone understands the importance of education, that one of the main reasons people move to Summit is because of the schools.
Right.
And no one wants to see a decline. So the Board of Education comes to the Board of School estimate every year with their budget. Once in my 33 years here has the budget been turned down. And that was for a couple hundred thousand dollars. They came back and there was a discrepancy. They fixed it. The Board of School estimate, we're a type one district. We're very different from a lot of other communities. We, the schools will get what they need. And under the redevelopment statute, we have the right, the city, to designate monies from the pilot to go to the schools in any given year if that's what's necessary. So I know trust is not in great supply these days. But no one up here and no one in this community wants to see a slide in the schools. So I would, and I take my, hopefully, the demographic advice we've gotten from our consultant, the Board of Education, and what the superintendent and the board feels. We have a mailer that we just printed to go to every household in town, talking about the reasons for the redevelopment, then the project and some of the details about it. Unfortunately, since we changed our minds about the date, the data on the bit on the mailer that says we're voting on all of this on July 19th is now not accurate. But that's in response to listening to people and things are changing. So I would have liked that mailer to be in the mail today. Now it's not going to be. It'll be another couple of days before we make the correction. But it's a mailer that goes to 7,000 or 8,000 households. So the last thing I want to say is I would love to get together with you and with our communications chief. So please email me and radis@cityofsummit.org and let's get together.
Thank you. Also, just as a rebuttal for the communication, I mean, you could just say, you know, refer to the website for more information about the project. It's ever-changing as we take on feedback. So you don't even have to put maybe specific dates, but some people don't even know to go to the website. You know, there are technically challenged people. I live with one, you know.
My daughter lives with one, too.
Doesn't text, has a flip phone, would love to stay off the grid for the rest of his life.
Right.
So that, you know, I just take that perspective because there are different generations.
Oh, no, I agree. And that's one reason is we have the mailer, because there are so many people that don't use the internet. And then we've had people who tell us, I know you've got, it's a robust website with a lot of information about Broad Street West. And then I have had, I can't tell you how many comments, people saying, there's just too much information there.
Yeah.
I don't know what to do with that.
But at least it's there. The challenge that I had was that I didn't receive any information, which had been claimed that was notified through mail.
Right.
And it wasn't until I was on social media that I was like, oh, what is this? And it just took me by surprise that it'd been so many years. And I just found out about it now.
Well, so let's have a meeting and I'd love your input.
It could just be better. And I think then more people would be involved and, you know, we'd be able to work better towards this. And then just with the building materials, if you take a look at like Williamsburg, it's just, they're cheap. They're just, they're temporary. They're going to last like 15 years. They're just, they are just ugly buildings. And I think we could do much better. So. And just one last thing, like I watch all these new houses being built and they all just look the same. So I love Summit for the characteristics of like every home, you know, the quality of like brick. And that's what I've loved about it. You know, if I want to look in a cookie cutter place, I'll move to Virginia or North Carolina. But that's what I love about Summit and that's why I continue.
Oh, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Eric Moberg. It's Eric with a C, M-O-B-E-R-G. I'm on New England Avenue. My observation and my sense is that the substantial number of people assembled in this room represents a very, very thin sliver of people. In my capacity as a condo board vice president, when I share discussions about this, the response is, we're getting rid of the fire department? There's going to be a building going up there? So people truly do not know. This is a tiny representation of the entire town. And I think it'd be very mindful of the mayor and council to consider that. Thank you.
Hi, Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford Road. First, I want to thank you all for hosting this year. So I think we all owe them a round of applause. After last week, this is really welcome. So thank you for having us here. Second of all, thank you for the communications because I'm getting really tired of running around with these lawn signs. But people are still asking for them. So I will still try to communicate to everybody. If they want a lawn sign, I will still be making them. But I would really think the communication is great. So thank you for sending out that mailer. That's one. The other thing I'd like to bring up, the parking, yes, major issue. So I also want to thank for moving this till September. Much appreciated as well. A big issue with the parking on street. I parallel park. I'm great. I've got a big truck. I'm in and out like that. But teaching my, you know, six children to parallel park with permits and stuff, they are not going to be able to learn on Morris Avenue. And guess what? They're going to be backing up traffic all the way to Magic Fountain. So you people are not going to be happy with that new light that's down there on River Road. So that's a real big issue and concern is that parking. But the other thing, you know, Mr. Vartan, we talked about the 72 units and how a builder, I know Mr. Powell said a builder is not going to come into that with the 72 units last week. You know, we haven't talked about possibility of a builder coming in wanting to build on that. And I wanted to touch base on that a little bit. So you said that the property cannot be developed with that. And I would like to read something that shows otherwise. So give me one second. Last week, I did have a developer there and he was sitting in the back with his young daughter till 1:30. He was listening to all the comments and he was ready to get up and say something and he didn't. And he is from this town and he has his heart into this town. And he did make a comment and say that he doesn't like to speak up about situations. And I'm not going to name any names. I'm not going to give any financials. And I'm not going to say anything that's going to put anybody in jeopardy here. But I would like everybody to know that he did state that he would build within, without changing any proposes to the master plan. And he did say that, I believe that the proposed changes to the master plan do not align with the charm of the downtown Summit and that the original plan is sufficient to fulfill the needs of the residents, city and developer. He did say that he would develop the site per the original master plan. So there are developers out there and I am glad you were taking the time this summer to think about it. Maybe opening this up to bid and having other developers come in and say, hey, this is what the value of the property is. This is something that it could be. And this is something I think it should be. So I really think, you know, take this time to digest. And the only reason, the only reason that he found out about this project was because of the lawn sign. He was the one of the people that chased me down that I mentioned last week. Okay, he was the, he had no clue about this. And he saw my lawn sign and he said, what is this? And I had to educate him. Now, there's got to be hundreds and, you know, thousands of people within this city that don't know about this project, just like she was just stating. So just think about the opportunity. Think about the value of this land. We are a valuable city. I love this city and I'm going to keep fighting for it, just like everybody else here. So thank you.
So, Mr. Marzidi, could you please respond to that?
Yes, I am aware of that offer. And I should point out that at the moment, the city is not legally able to undertake such a process. Why? Because in February 2020, the city, following the exhaustive process of the issuance of our request for qualifications from developers all over the place, followed by the issuance of requests for proposals from a shortlisted group, the city interviewed, I think, close to 13 combined development entities. And at that, at the conclusion of that process, designated as a conditional redeveloper, L&M and Toll. They entered into, the parties entered into at that time, which is typical throughout the state in redevelopment, a conditional designation and escrow agreement that generally provides that the parties will exclusively negotiate with each other for this project in an attempt to arrive at a willing agreement, a redevelopment agreement for the project. That process is currently underway. It would be a violation of that agreement for the city at this point to undertake a process of inviting others to come in. There might be a time when that could happen. But at this very time, that would be a violation of our agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Marzidi. Next comment?
Hi, my name is Bill Mumma. I live on Freyertuck Circle. My wife and I and my kids, we've lived here for 32 years. So I was super surprised to hear about this project. And I understand now that it's been going on a couple of years. And I did go to the website and I took a look and I got the 40-page document. And the introduction talks about somehow disconnected investment opportunity, et cetera. It really, really kind of blew my mind. I've heard concerns expressed to me before I came tonight. And then tonight, concerns about safety and traffic and, you know, whether buildings would be ugly and dominate the town town. My concern is I don't know what good it's going to do. You know, what problem is it going to solve? What benefit is it going to achieve? And that doesn't come clear to me in the documents that are on the website. And I'm stunned. I'm kind of confused. So to me, you know, what makes for a great town? Why do we live here and not move away? You know, you want a clean, vibrant city center, which to the work of you and prior city councils has been achieved. I mean, everyone that ever comes to Summit, whether it's just to visit or live here briefly, falls in love with that town center. You want good schools, which have been spoken tonight, superb schools. It's wonderful. You want police, fire and medical, top of the charts in Summit. We have that. And you want a community spirit. So when you think about these things, this is what you want from a town. And then you say, great, what will this behemoth project do for the town that will somehow help these public goods? Or is there some other good that it's going to do that we don't know about? All of us citizens here. And that's where communication comes. That's where I should have been told a year ago, six months ago, two months ago, there's a major project that's going to affect downtown. But don't worry, it's going to help in some powerful way. It's going to help your schools or help your police and fire. It's going to help the city center do something. Sell us on it because it's going to change our town forever. And so that's my concern. Maybe this project's wonderful, but how would we know? Even if we go to the website, we can't learn. I appreciate the meeting tonight. I appreciate the community that sort of reached out to people like me to bring me here. And I'm hoping, really hoping that the city reconsiderers uses the space for something more in line with what has always made Summit a wonderful town. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Vartan, would you like to just address that quickly?
Through, yeah, through you, Council President. And if I'm not, if you can't hear me well, let me know. This is the first time I'm speaking tonight. I'll just respond to that briefly. I think there are basically three buckets of reasons why this project makes sense. The first is that it clearly prescribes in the master plan several different things that this project addresses. First is promote mixed-use development. That's one. Expand the boundaries of the downtown. That's another one explicitly mentioned in the master plan. Provide a variety of different housing options. That's a third that's explicitly mentioned in the master plan. Then you've got the second bucket, which is basically financials, right? We're going to get a significant amount of money from the sale of this land that's going to go to offset municipal debt. And that's helpful. That's extremely helpful so that we can continue to invest in our infrastructure and our roads and our parks and our playgrounds. And then the third bucket is we have this affordable housing obligation. But we also have, running throughout the history of this community, an affordable housing commitment, right? And it's the idea that we should be building as much affordable housing as we can. We have an agreement with Fair Share Housing that outlines between 2015 and 2025 the need to build 50 more affordable housing units. We're 17 of the way there. This proposal, as it stands right now, gets us 20 units closer to that. So that, I think briefly, are the three buckets worth of reasons why this project makes sense. I think it's more than fair to say, we have to communicate about that better. You know, I think what, one of the big challenges here is that we keep having more public meetings and going back and changing things, right? So we can't effectively communicate about a project that continues to change. So now that we're at a spot where we have a pretty good idea of what the project's going to look like, we have a pretty good idea of when we're going to vote on it. If I could finish, that would be great. Thank you. So now that we have a pretty good idea of what it looks like and a pretty good idea of when we're going to vote on it, we absolutely can and we absolutely will spend this time speaking with people, making sure that the information is clear, that the information is out there, that it's completely transparent and that we answer the questions that are necessary to answer so that we can feel comfortable moving forward with it. So that's, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll take our next commenter.
Thank you very much. It's Mike Zabel, 172 Blackburn Road. Hi, Nora. As a 16-year resident of Summit, father of two boys, one in public school, one with special needs that needs to be driven to school every single day. I'm against the project that you have laid out. I am not against what was proposed as a redevelopment. I think that area does warrant redevelopment. And I'm all for extending to residents and people outside of our community the opportunity to live in Summit for all different types of people. Not to be redundant a little bit on the traffic study. I used to worry about my kids, you know, going to school, being driven. Now I'm actually more concerned with the bikes and just the walking. The four-way stop signs have been actually more of a curse, I think, than a blessing in some cases, where people's wave other people's by and signs get misconstrued. It's a matter of time. It used to be, I believe it's a matter of time until someone gets hit on a car. It's not a matter of when, it's a matter of, it's a matter of when, not if. Anyway, I'm concerned about the traffic study, when it was done, when it was concluded. Did it take into consideration the River Road project, which wasn't even designed and built and functioning at the time? Did it take into consideration the Union Township, Union County traffic lights that they've added? And when was it done? Was it done during the pandemic when everybody was remote? So those are some of the questions I have. The other thing is I've never seen any study on the JCPN L power line and the power draw on the grid. I mean, there's a Facebook page called Power Up Summit specifically for power. And we haven't even looked at the draw on our grid and how that would actually affect the power outage. And if you do this project in the fall and it goes into winter, And if you do this project in the fall and it goes into winter, it's going to be even more of a, a mess. Speaking of maintenance, the, the, the garbage, I, I think you guys had said that the garbage was going to be jointly divided up between the, the owners of Toll Brothers and Summit. And, and I'm concerned about where that's going to be located, is that not correct?
The, the garbage collection will be taken care of by the owners, by the developer.
But, right. And then, but, but my point is though, if, if, if both Summit and the developer are tasked with doing something and something's in the middle, someone's going to push it from one side to the next, I'm concerned that it's not going to get cleaned the way you want it cleaned.
The way that works is it's once-a-week city collection, if they choose that, and then if they want to supplement, there's more. Usually, usually apartment developments don't want to have enough trash room to store a week's worth of garbage.
Okay.
So, they usually supplement or they just choose to do it all themselves, that's their choice.
So, then we'll have garbage trucks on different schedules going down the same streets, picking up the trash, no. I, I don't want to get into that. All right. The, the other thing is, I was shocked to hear and that Dr. Powell, that you did not take into effect the time value of money and, and the amortization schedule. I was kind of, I'm sorry, who, who, was it, was it?
My eye.
Joe, sorry, Joe. On, on the presentation that you did the other night, I, I was shocked to hear that, that financial didn't get taken into consideration. And I know that everyone likes change. I think it's way too large for the area. A five over one is, is just an eyesore on our town. Again, not against the, the project, just I think it's an eyesore. In the, in the last meeting, you said that the project would have 300 new residents, which is great, 38 new students. I find that number quite low and I'm not sure how that was actually calculated. And then the other thing is, the 20,000 square feet of green space, was that an aggregate over the whole project or was that one particular area? It sounded like it was a, a piecemeal of, of little bits and pieces that equaled 20,000 square foot of green space. Just in conclusion, I think that the people are attracted to our town because of the restaurants, because it's easy to commute to, because it was easy to park and there's a parking garage for that purposes. Attracting new and younger people to our town, to the brick and mortar shops that you're planning on building is, is a great thing, but I, I have a feeling that you're going to push people to other towns, to go shopping, to park, to dinner. I had to travel the other night four times just to find a parking spot for the CVS in, in Summit and more people are going to the new Providence one. So, I'm, I'm just concerned and I fear that we won't matter and I, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I feel compelled to. And then the first comment you made at the beginning of the evening where this is not on the record, I, I kind of was taken back. I don't know what that means, if it wasn't on the record, what we're saying tonight. Can you explain?
Yes. Mr. Jacoby do it. Right. Yep.
Yeah.
That was, what I was saying is, people are free to speak tonight, this is a public comment. The hearing on the, whether or not the ordinance complies with the master plan, that's before the planning board, that's a formal hearing on that issue. The comments that are made then are part of that record. Then when the ordinance comes back to the city in September, on September 13th, they have to open it up for a public hearing and those comments are part of that public record on the, on the adoption of an ordinance. So, tonight is, this is all captured, but this isn't specifically geared towards either the, whether the ordinance, the amendments comply with the master plan and then ultimately the adoption of an ordinance. That's what I meant by being on the record.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, it's, it's not that these comments are not being recorded or captured, it's all part of tonight's meeting.
I just want us to matter.
Yes, indeed.
And obviously, this is a small part. But I, I really, I do thank you for, for listening to us and, and for going the distance on the last call, but I'm, I'm just really concerned about the safety of my kids walking to school. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. Would you, would you mind, you had a whole bunch of questions in there and I would, I would like to respond to them. Could you, would you, do you mind sending me an email of that or give it to Rosie?
Yeah, absolutely.
If you have the piece of paper, you could just bring it up and then we'll, we'll respond.
Fine.
Or email them to us.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
Okay, next comment? Come on up. Hello?
Hi, how are you? My name is Eric Kerslaske, 169 Broad Street. I just want to say, I'm very new to this conversation. I did not join the meeting last week, but I spent my Friday night listening to the Cliff Note version, all of which was four hours, so I listened until 2:00 in the morning. Appreciate everybody behind me and in front of me who participated in that. What I observed, I observed a lot of passion, purpose, creativity, resourcefulness and resolve. And I saw a community of residents that were united as one. I heard from people that lived in Summit for two or three years and people that had families who had lived here for two or three generations. What was extremely, extremely disappointing was the magnitude of disconnect by the community or residents and the council. And it made me wonder, how did we get here? So, I started doing a little homework and looked back on the conversations that have happened over time. And if I look back, and all of this in constructive dialogue, but I look back to 2017, tap into Summit, Council President Fox had been asked the question, what are three biggest challenges facing Summit? One of which was communication. And she vowed to, I will communicate with Summit residents, make sure their views are represented on council. Too often, residents find out about decisions after council has already voted and we need to make council more open and responsive and make sure that residents have the opportunity to comment before votes are taken. Most importantly, council should represent the views of Summit residents rather than making decisions without their input. Councilmember Meinger, in October 2021, what do you believe is the ideal outcome of Broad Street West redevelopment project? What role has community engagement played in the process so far and how will it help to reach the desired outcome? Your response? The project came into existence from public input, beginning with the master plan process, so community engagement is at the heart of Broad Street West. We've seen councils seek out input from the public on multiple occasions and it has afforded residents like myself the opportunity to provide feedback. Continued dialogue with residents is critical to the success of Broad Street West. In fact, this is the case with any project, they'll bring some appreciable level of change to our communities' built environment. If elected to council, I will ensure that public input is the central component of this project's steps to completion with its stated goals being achieved only through wide buy-in from the community. Danny O'Sullivan, 2022, the transparent process and ongoing public dialogue alleviate my concern and boost my confidence regarding Broad Street West. There have been multiple public outreach sessions going back to 2016 and we have consistently engaged our constituents at council meetings and in one-on-one conversations. The current council has listened intensely. So, it made me think, the residents and councils were very much aligned, we've just slightly veered off course. And I think about all of the people who've come up here today and have spoke last week, there's so much intellectual capital in community and in this community specifically. Let's tap into it. Let's work together, let's figure this out together and let's be accountable together. Thank you.
I will not be quoting the Greeks tonight. I do have a process question, though. I'm a little rusty on my Robert's Rules and procedural, but, but maybe council can help me. As I understand it, tonight, we all expect you to introduce the ordinance. Is that also referred to as a first reading or first hearing on the ordinance?
Yes.
Thank you. And then, as I understand, the procedure, the second reading is now the scheduled September 13th date, is that correct?
Yes.
And then after the second hearing, I can't recall if there needs to be a delay, 24 hours or a few weeks, you could vote final passage after second hearing on September 13th, is that correct? Okay, I think that's really important for everybody to understand here tonight.
Sir, that's only on the, that's only on the redevelopment plan amendments.
Thank, thank you, Council President. So, I would not just thank you for, for listening and delaying the second reading, which could also be the final adoption of the ordinance till September 13th. I would heartily encourage you to table introduction of the ordinance tonight. tonight to delay the second reading, which could also be the final adoption on September 13th, is a bit of a red herring. That I don't believe that once the Summit citizens get back from vacation and get fully engaged, as we're hearing, not all of Summit is fully engaged, that we're going to have a vote less than two weeks after Labor Day. So, I would again restate and I would plead with you to table a motion and not introduce the ordinance tonight for first hearing. Thank you.
As I think I mentioned in the beginning, and it's up to council what, what they decide to do tonight, I personally would like to see the ordinance be introduced tonight because I want to see it to go to the, to the planning board. It has been said by many people that they do not believe that the amendments are consistent with the master plan. And I think the sooner we all know what the ma, what the planning board thinks, does it comply, consist with the master plan or not, the sooner we know that, the better. That's why I think it is important that the, the council introduces that ordinance tonight because it goes to the planning board next week.
Okay, we can. Okay, next comment? Is there any other comments? Come on up. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is John Patriti, 6 West End Avenue. I've been a Summit resident since 2004. I second all of my neighbors' comments here, I'm against this proposal. I don't think that, I think, you know, there's two sides to this, there's Toll Brothers and then there's Summit. I think we could all see where Toll Brothers incentive is, they want to build something for as cheap as possible, sell it for as much as they possibly can. And when the last, when the last unit is sold, they're off to their next conquest and we, Summit, are left with whatever's left over. The town, though, is obviously, or a lot of residents are against this proposal, not against redoing Broad Street West. And I guess my question is more on the unintended consequences, some that have mentioned here of doing this proposal, parking has been, or, and traffic has been mentioned as one, but what has not been talked about is the traffic during the building. This isn't just going to happen, this building's going to take at least two to three years probably to be put up under its current form, I would assume.
I think they were estimating closer to 18 months.
Well, as we've all, as we-
No, it's a two years? Okay, I'm wrong, it was two years.
So, we know it'll be longer than that and then as everyone here-
Okay, I was mistaken, it was two years.
Everyone knows some renovations, usually time is 20% more than what they actually, the builder actually tells you. This is in the, the jugular vein of our town in terms of traffic. So, if everyone, everyone here is going to remember the Morris Avenue Bridge, that was not a picnic. This is going to put that to shame in terms of disruption to all of our lives and we haven't even had it built yet and we haven't even spoken about the drain on all the other resources that the town has had. So, I think in the spirit of thinking through all of the unintended consequences before going further, I think is, is vitally important. And I think, you know, you've all dedicated your, a lot of your time, you've all sacrificed a lot of your family time. If this side is right and this is built and it turns into what we fear, the legacy of this council is going to be that this was the vote that it went through. And that would be a shame because you've all spent so much of your life, you've all sacrificed so much of your family for the good of the town and all that would be erased because everyone would remember this council for this potential monstrosity that we'll all be staring on forever and Toll Brothers will be gone. Thank you.
Good evening. You're probably tired of seeing me. I apologize.
No, never.
Don Nelson, 20 Plain Street. Been here all my life, 60, 60 years. I know I don't look it, but that's what it is. All right? Many years ago, I worked for a gentleman and he told me that if the process is not communicated or broken, people lose trust in it. And unfortunately, I think the process, you, this, the council and council before you had a great process. It came up with a great result, a 72-unit building. Somewhere along the line, that process was removed, broken, shattered, whatever you want to call it, to end up with what we have now. I'm glad to see the process is taking somewhat of a better step back in the right direction. However, as Mr., I forget your name, Kane pointed out, that's right, I'm sorry, I forgot. That's what happens when you turn 60, right? You're, you're having, I'm having to see your moment. Please make sure, I suggest that we just table this till September. Another couple of months is not going to make a big difference after however many years we've been doing this. It's not going to make a big difference. Table it, listen to your experts in, in Summit. Some of the financial numbers that were thrown out at the last meeting last week were questioned. When you buy a car, you look at every dollar you're spending. We're spending, we're, we're giving the developer a lot of money, a lot of, a lot of room to develop the building that I fear will not be in the best interest of Summit. You know, a $600,000 a year return is a drop in the bucket of our budget. As somebody else said earlier, tighten the budget. You have to, you have to. We have to pay more in taxes, 2%. Hey, look, I'm here because I've, was, my father moved here, I don't know how many years ago, I'm happy to be here, it's expensive for me to live here, I put five kids through the school system, they all went to quality colleges because of this town. So, we need to think about that and it's a struggle for me to be here, but I'm here because I want to be. And I don't want to find out five years from now that we, we developed this building and all of a sudden it's going to be a problem. All right, so please, table it till next meeting, let's talk about it, get the experts from the town together, get that process back in place. It was a great process, it worked very well, had a great end result until somewhere it went poof and disappeared. Thank you very much.
My name is Jim McTunen. I'm a taxpayer here in Summit, Euclid Avenue, 11 Euclid, Unit 6A, since 2010. Prior to that, I've lived about 35 years out in Burnage Township. I spent about 15 years on the planning board in Burnage Township, 13 years as chairman. I've dealt with Toll Brothers any number of years, probably 500 units were developed in two separate projects of condominiums, single-family detached homes also. I'm aware of the company, the stock company, public company, interested in making money, which is what they do. I, I, by way of background, I moved here in, I moved out of the Big House in Burnage Township probably in 2000, 1999 and moved into a Toll Brothers new construction condominium in Burnage Township at that time. I'm familiar with the company. I moved here in 2010, I've got nine grandkids here, that's why I'm here, my wife and I. And I'm a little dopey as to the entire process here in terms of what's happened. I understand there's- I understand that the one thing that grips me about Summit, I love the place, I can't find parking. And it's difficult. I come down to town, I go to a restaurant, this and that, it's tough. My understanding is, is that onsite parking is light, to say the least, which is going to put pressure on other areas of the downtown area in terms of parking. That's not a very good idea. So I ask you to look at the things in terms of that. You really need, maybe it's a planning board issue, but somebody's got to tune this thing up. And in any event, it's dense, it's, it is what it is. You need to consider some of those ramifications. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you?
Good evening.
Thank you for your time and for your efforts on this. I'm not going to read what I wrote. I just, my name is Charles Cusumano, 22 Bedford Road, C-U-S-U-M-A-N-O. Just reacting to things here, so it's going to be kind of a stream of consciousness. Do you really need to go to the planning board to recognize that the plan is kind of effed up? I mean, can't you see that already? Do you really need to go to the planning board for them to tell you that it's wrong?
It's a legal step.
It's a legal step. You know it's wrong, you're going to wait for them to tell you it's wrong. Because it's too big.
Mr. Cusumano, please--
Okay, okay.
Could you use a little bit of decorum here? Thank you.
So let's talk about the changes that you've made, that you're voting on this ordinance for, for. You went from 140 units to 133. Is it the same square footage building? Is it the same? Does anybody know that?
Do you want to finish your statement and then we'll--
Okay, that's a question. Is it the same square footage?
Okay.
And the population of the kids went up, right? Correct? Okay, so--
To 32.
32 more, 32 people, right? And more bedrooms, I believe. Correct?
The, the unit mix did change.
The unit mix did change. Okay, great. And it's higher.
No.
It was 65, now it's 70?
No.
It was always 70.
That's what the--
It's in the redevelopment amendment, it says 70 feet in blue.
We're going to let our planner answer those. Why don't you ask the questions and then we'll have--
Okay, well, it says 70 feet in blue in the blue line, red line cross-out thing. So I believe it was 65 or 60, and now it's 70. So it got higher, it's about the same size, so where are these big changes, other than pushing the meeting a month and a half? That's what I'm upset about. And I appreciate you making the changes of the meeting. That's great. And then the parking on street is obviously a disaster, and hopefully that will get worked out. If you talk to any builder, and I emailed you this, they said that they always build the garage first. Always. Always build the garage first. That way the town can use the garage while the other building is going up. And I just had lunch with a friend that lives in Berkeley Heights. Took him an extra 20 minutes, just 1 o'clock at Windbury's. He got there 1:10, whatever it was. He said, "Oh, God, this town's always a disaster with parking." I have a friend who lives in Burnsville, rents, owns a house in Duremus. And I told him, I saw him at his thing the other night in the city, I said, "Did you hear about Broad Street West?" He goes, "No." He goes, "Oh, my God, the parking, it's going to be a disaster." That's the first thing people respond to automatically. And I don't think you've solved it with that solve. You've got to build the parking garage first. And then, yeah, I think that's about it. Anyway. Anyway, I just want to make sure you can hear me and that you're awake over there. All right, thank you very much.
Ms. Lindman, would you like to answer the question about the size of the building?
Yeah, I, I have, we'll have to confirm whether or not the square footage itself changed overall. That'll have to get back to you on. But as far as the height goes, the height is measured as an average, and it was, the average height of the building is 65.5 feet. But the plan always contemplated that if there was an additional story added or additional height, that it could go up to 10 feet. And it's just codifying that. So the average height of the building is 65.5. And because of the change in grade, as you move from Maple on Broad Street down to Morris, you're going to have a greater height than where, than what you'd have at the northern, northern part of the site. So it's, it's not misleading, the building itself is, you know, still has the same average height, it's just accounting for the grade and how it's calculated under the plan.
But there were changes made to the, to the side over by Morris Avenue where it was cut back.
Yeah, there were carve-outs. I don't know if the square footage changed. I don't want to make a representation on that. Yes, there were carve-outs on the building. I don't know what the original square footage is and what it is now. I'd rather look that up.
Of course. And if you could also just talk about the, the capping of the 133 units, because I think that is a significant change.
Yes. The, I mean, going from the 140 in the amendments to 133, that is the change that is being proposed right now with the redevelopment plan amendment. I did, you know, it was, it was, I personally appreciate community feedback and any kind of corrections that you all can provide. I was, I wrote the redevelopment plan. We wanted to make sure that we were okay and correct on all of the lot sizes and everything. And I worked with, over the past weekend, I worked with the city's tax assessor to confirm the size of the site, to make sure we have the density correct. They also had the number I had because we were using the same database system, but they did adjustments for GIS. And they got to 1.6 acres as the project size. And that is also what the survey said. So if you're looking at it, and we just wanted to correct those numbers to make sure that you all knew that, and I'm sorry, I don't have the, I can't get my computer to work. But if you look at 133, over 1.6 acres, that is, the density is 83 units an acre. The overall, I just would like to confirm these numbers again because they were confused on the last time. The sub-district 3 itself is actually larger than we thought based off of the survey. It's 2.7241 acres, which means the range of units under the current plan on sub-district 3 goes from 123 to 150 being allowed on the whole district. So yes, you're concentrating the building on a smaller footprint, and that's the effect you're seeing.
Actually, what I had hoped you would talk about is the removing of the residential units from the other sub-districts.
Okay. Yeah, in addition to that, we've, the redevelopment plan amendments have removed the potential for residential dwellings in sub-district 2, which could have been about 40 units. And then we're also removing, because there was a concern about sub-district 4, which is not contemplated or designated currently, but to, you know, alleviate that issue as well. There's, depending on whether or not the City Hall parking lot was used, there could be additional 60 to 90 units there if the parking lot is utilized with structured parking. By removing the dwelling units and the residential density bonus there, we're also saying that nowhere, in no sub-district or at any point in the future, will residential be, residential be allowed anywhere but this current proposed site, which is 133 units and significantly less than what could have been done under the existing redevelopment plan.
Thank you. I think we're ready for our next question.
Hi. Allison Chiefo, 34 Laurel Avenue. I have some questions about the communication the city has had with the residents. And I'd like them, can I get these questions answered live instead of having to wait until I'm finished?
I, we can try. I, but let's see what they are.
Okay. Why is tonight's council meeting being held in this location?
To allow for more space.
Okay. So then why wasn't last week's meeting, which was the presentation of the revised plans, held at the, why wasn't it held here?
Because we're not, because we were, it was already noticed and it's, we require a certain number of days of notice before, and we could not move it.
But you knew that we were going to, there was going to be more people last week--
We did the best we could.
--than would have fit in the council, because there were chairs set up and there was a room set up upstairs.
We did the best we could, Ms. Chiefo.
Okay.
We, you know, we had two overflow areas, we did the best we could, we realized that we had a better option, and we had the time to do it. And so we changed it for this one.
But I think that, that meeting last week had more, had a lot of the information that a lot of people here might not have seen. So I think that that was, that's really, that was not right to have, that meeting should have been held in a larger location. Tonight's meeting should have been held somewhere we could have more parking. If we were at the high school, I was calling in, people could not find parking today.
Ms. Chiefo, I can explain to you why we're not at the high school. Because they're doing construction on the auditorium, and it affects the sound, or construction that affects the auditorium sound system. And we were told that the library only accommodated 50 people. So I, I'm not sure that that's actually so about the 50 people in the library, it sounded low to me, but the maximum number, I think, is 120. City Hall is 100, just in our chambers. That's why we're not at the high school.
Okay. Why was--
We've looked through all the options, and we chose the best option we could find.
Okay. Why was last week's meeting, once again, the one that had the presentation of the revised plans, why was the, the announcement of that meeting sent out electronically and not by mail? Like a flyer in the mail?
Pardon?
Last week's meeting was--
There's, there's no requirement to send a notice by mail.
Okay, I'm just asking. Okay. So why was this recycling flyer that I think everybody here received? Why was this sent through the mail and not sent electronically? Because this is about recycling, so I would think recycling flyer would send, be sent out electronically. Why was--
Because-- They're really different. There's a lot of people in this town who recycle every week. Last time, and I would notice specifically, last time we switched recyclers was in the summer of 2015. And information was not given out early enough, and there was an uproar. And I know that specifically because I was running for mayor at the time. And it was an interesting opportunity for me to say we should have better communication, quite frankly.
So this was more important than the proposed meeting, the meeting last week that talked about the new Broad Street West plans?
To some people, maybe.
But most of the town--
I'm going to say that, to some people who may not be as interested in what we're talking about. The decision made, the decision that was made to put out that fly, that postcard was weeks ago. Because we want to make sure people knew that by July 1st, everything would change. So that was why that was done. We send out, we did the standard procedure for our council meetings.
Okay. Now, who do you think notices, I mean, which, which group of residents in Summit are not on the internet, are not, are not receiving electronic emails and will be receiving this? The seniors, that's what I would guess. The reason why I brought this here is this was a senior in town that approached me at the rally and said, "I am so annoyed that this is what the town sent me about recycling, and this is what they're important about, and I had to find out about what's going on Broad Street West from the, from the neighbors." So that's, that's, this, this what I understand. Then also, you mentioned that you're going to be mailing out flyers now, that you're getting them ready to mail out about Broad Street West. Why this late in the process? Is this finally, the flyers finally being mailed out?
Because we've been, you may not believe me, but we've been listening to residents and making changes. And until we came to some closer to the end solutions, we waited to create the flyer. We're still not there yet because clearly, just this week, we've changed the dates as to when the meetings are going to be to take these votes.
So the flyer should be an announcement of a town hall meeting that was promised, okay? If it's not, and it always, the announcement, the flyer's going to announce that there's a meeting in September to come and watch us, I don't even understand what's going on. If everyone comes to the meeting in September, are they going to get a new presentation of the whole Broad Street West?
Why don't you and I get a meeting together?
That's, that's, actually, we came up with another thing that I was, that I noticed. If, if everybody, only one person can ask the same question, all answers, and you had mentioned to somebody earlier, that to have them email you so that you can email the answer, we all deserve the answer to all these questions, not one-on-one. And this is back to my problem. The reason I stood up here is the communication that you have into residents is not adequate. And I, I just think that, it's been, a lot of people have mentioned this, and I have been going around. I've been telling people about Broad Street West, and it's amazing how many people don't know. Most people in this room can attest to that, that most of the neighbors don't know about this. And it's not my job to communicate to the residents, it's your job. So please, do us a favor and do your job and make sure that everybody knows what's going on in Broad Street West before it's too late.
Thank you.
Hello, Council President, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Mike McTernan, 11 Blackburn Road, M.C., capital T, E-R-N-A-N.
Thank you for that.
Yes. Thank you, guys. I do want to reiterate, I know the hard work that you guys have put in. And I said it last week, and I would say it again, you guys are volunteers, and I do really, really appreciate all the, the time and effort and the way you care about this community, just like all these people do. So, that being said, you know, I, I was, one, one question I had that maybe Mr. Marazidi can answer. You mentioned that someone made a comment that we couldn't have anybody come and put a bid in on the property because we are locked in to a, some contractual obligation to deal with Toll Brothers and L&M. When does that expire?
That continues while the negotiations continue and while both parties are prepared to continue the negotiations. So either party can terminate it if they conclude that the negotiations are not productive, we are not there yet.
Okay, so, so, so it's both part, each party has the option to opt out of the agreement at any time. So the city, in theory, could say, "We're done here, we could go somewhere else."
In theory, but we're at the point that-- That, that needs to be clarified. We have, we are engaged in active negotiations. We'd have to be mindful of the fact, if we were going to, if we were going to terminate, we'd have to have a valid reason.
No, I, I understand. Okay, thank you very much. So the, the other thing, I, I was really thankful that Council Member Vartan brought up the master, the master plan. And when he was talking about why we, we have this. And it, it is a foundational document that our redevelopment plan was based on. And that was the document that are the original RFPs for the different developers on what their ideas for the site was based on. And I go back to those meetings, because I was in them, and I think the only other person on, up here who was in those meetings was our Madam Mayor. You were not.
I, yes, I was.
Oh, you were. I'm sorry, Council President. So I do know, as part of those things, my friend, Mr. Naidoo, was there as well, and he was probably more persnickety about density than I was. But we received a bunch of different proposals. And I'm just trying to, and we, we rejected quite a few out of hand because of density, or they didn't understand the, what we were trying to do with our redevelopment plan. Or they just were so out of character with our master plan and the redevelopment plan as we envisioned it, that it didn't make sense to continue. And I'm just trying to think, if, if we had gotten a plan that had twice the density in the space that we had talked about, and talked about parking not even being in the subdivision, that they'd figure it out and put it all over town, I, for one, would have thought, quite a few of us would have rejected that out of hand. Because it wasn't-- Now, that never happened. The proposal we got was pretty commensurate with what our redevelopment plan stated. And they were accepted. I was happy to, to vote for them, to accept them. Because it made sense. But when we go back to the master plan, you know, as Council Member Vartan mentioned, one of the things we wanted was a diversity of housing. Because one of the things that came through loud and clear in our master plan was, there's not enough spots for senior, or for older people who want to downsize and stay in town that they can live in. Came through loud and clear in the master plan. The other thing was-- The other thing was, we need more types of dwellings for couples who are just getting going, who want to get married, move here, where they can live and afford that. And we, and that came through loud and clear in the master plan. So the buildings, when we went out, we specifically thought about properties as they were proposed that had a big concentration of single and maybe a few, two, you know, two-bedroom type apartments. Because that was the need, along with affordable housing, that came through in the plan. And that got built into the redevelopment plan. Now, one thing I was a little taken aback last Tuesday, when I looked at the new plan online, they had this thing about the number of schoolchildren going up. And you're like, "Well, that's odd, how did that happen?" And I think someone last week mentioned or asked the question, what were the new parameters of the build, the apartments? And it turns out, we're adding, the newest proposal is adding 25 bedrooms. We're getting rid of the, we're getting rid of the, a three-bedroom affordable unit, which is probably the most valuable affordable unit in the property. And that's now out the window, to go from 21 to 20 affordable housing things. And then in addition, we're adding 13-odd three bedrooms, adding an extra bedroom here and there. Now, one of my issues is, why was that not all laid out as part of the presentation last week? It goes to this idea that we should be blatantly transparent and overly giving of information so people can understand and make a determination on maybe, does it make sense or not? And I don't, either that was a gross oversight, or people didn't think it really mattered. I don't know how that decision, which seems pretty material, just wasn't included in the presentation. I don't know. But, but what I would say, though, because the way that has now transpired, that building has regressed even farther from what was envisioned in the master plan. Three bedrooms was not what people in Summit was asking for as part of the master plan revision. We have those, they're called single-family houses. There's loads of them. So when this happened, when this revision happened, it made the building even more non-conforming besides the density, besides the parking, but it's now even mitigating even farther from the type of units that people in the master, that the master plan said that the town wanted. And that's something that you guys need to take into consideration. Like, the call to table this, like, the, it is a legal obligation to vote on this, to send it to the planning board, if you decide you want to change the redevelopment plan. You can vote no on this, don't propose it, because you decided the redevelopment plan was fine the way it was. That was a document that conformed to the master plan. We went through the whole thing already. And you don't need the planning board to tell you that this building doesn't conform to the master plan. So I would suggest either tabling it to think about this for the fall, or just vote no tonight. One or the other. But if you do think that this does make a lot of sense, again, I would ask that you come up with a, could ask Toll Brothers to come up with a conforming building to the old, the current redevelopment plan. I'm not going to call it old, because I still have hope that it will still stay in existence. That conforms to the current redevelopment plan and works all the numbers out. And be transparent, and then show the community what the options are. Talk about services. I agree with you. I know your job is hard, heads finance and council president about balancing revenue and services and things like that. Show them what it means. And let people decide. But that's, that's why, you know, don't need to vote on this tonight. Do it in the fall. Get everything together.
Council, Council President, may I ask a clarifying question? Because I really appreciate former Councilman McTernan, who was, who was a part of the process in creating the revision to the master plan and the redevelopment plan. And so what I am thinking needs to be clarified is the plan that needs to be changed, that is incorporating all of the input from the community, is saying that what existed in 2017 was a bigger plan, and now it's been, it's been modified. So I, I am hoping, since the two, our two experts at the table were a part of both those processes, because I'm hearing a, I am hearing a competition, or you can have both. And so, the redevelopment plan that was created in 2017...
Twenty, yeah, 2019.
The redevelopment plan...
2019.
Is 2019. The master plan...
2016.
Was, was updated in 2019.
Yep.
So, I am, so it was 2019...
Yes.
That the redevelopment plan was voted on and approved.
Correct.
And that is the document that our experts have been taking feedback from council, the steering committee, and the community, and are adjusting it. And so, that's why I think there needs to be further clarification about saying, "Don't vote on it, don't send it to the planning board if you're not incorporating the changes that people are asking."
Look, I'm going to push back on some of the, of what Mr. McTernan represented as what happened at that meeting, because I was sitting there as well. And I pulled out all of the plans. I took a look at all of the plans that, the responses for proposals that, that we received. And, and I have to say that the L&amp;M and Toll Brothers one looked pretty similar to what we are dealing with now. It was, it was substantially bigger than 72 units. I, you know, and I had like a little spreadsheet that we made that had all of the number of units, the number of parking spots, the number of everything. And, you know, that was, and I know Mike had it because, you know, because I shared it with him and we talked about it. So I know that there were, and I also don't remember ever discussing the size of units. It's possible it happened, but I don't recall that. So, and I just want to also point out that the three-bedroom unit that was removed, that was not a decision that was on, the mix of units is, is governed by state regulation. The COA regulations say what the mix of units is. So for the affordable units, we don't get a say. That's just how it's done. So, you know, it is a valuable unit, we would love to have that affordable unit. But in answer to your question, Susan, I'm not sure what you're suggesting.
So what, what I appreciate McTernan raising is the relationship between the master plan, the redevelopment plan, the redevelopment agreement, and the re, and the redevelopment amendment. I think there needs to be more clarity between how those involving changes, which are legally bound, happen. And so, that's what I thought there might be an opportunity for McTernan, who was involved in those two processes, you and Mayor, who were involved in those two processes, as well as experts.
Well, I think I would rather throw it to our experts than for us to reminisce about the fun we had in 2019 with this. But I just want to clarify, the redevelopment agreement is not being discussed at all at this point.
Yes, I shouldn't have thrown that one in. But I apologize for throwing the agreement.
Okay.
I much more am interested in the relationship between the master plan and the, what he raises about what is the planning board's responsibility, that they must vote on that.
Okay, so why don't we let our experts explain that?
Yes, and if, at some point, I'm not answering your question, please interrupt. But the master plan created the guiding principles that enacted you all to hire us, to do a preliminary investigation, designate the area in need of redevelopment. And then to do any redevelopment, you have to have a redevelopment plan, which I've said a few times, is kind of equivalent to the zoning, the replacement zoning of what is allowed to be done on the property. The redevelopment amendments themselves, if you want to amend a plan, a redevelopment plan, this is again, separate from zoning and traditional land use planning that you might be aware of, you have to go through this amendment process. And when you take the amendments to, the governing body has to initiate those amendments if they'd like. And it doesn't mean if you initiate them that you support them. It means you're sending them to the planning board to review. And the legalese is, they have to tell you all or give you their opinion on whether or not the changes are not inconsistent, which really means, is this consistent with what was written way back in the master plan? Because obviously, the changes are not consistent with the redevelopment plan itself, but is, are the changes consistent with the intent, the guiding principles, the goals and objectives of the master plan? And they go through their own redevelopment, you know, their own review process for that. I have been working with their planner to get them any information I can so they can complete, you know, their review in a timely fashion, and they have everything they need. But yeah, it is a formal process where the planning board has to review any changes to a redevelopment plan, because it now has become the zoning for this area, and determine whether or not the changes are consistent or not with the master plan.
President, may I follow up? Because I think, planning board's responsibility also...
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
They can't hear you, Susan.
Isn't it also, Annie, the, the planning board's responsibility to look at the local redevelopment housing law obligation that the redevelopment plan must adhere to? And that is the other policy that guided the master plan, development plan. And I know this is so complex, so, but we really need to understand the relationship between what has to happen when. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, in the most simplest form, to review something for consistency, you look at the goals and objectives written in a plan. I know that many of them break it down for other strategies and actions, but consistency is determined by the goals and objectives section of a master plan that's laid out, you know, for every town. When they did their original consistency review, which they had to do when the redevelopment plan was first proposed, they take the goals and objectives that are written in the redevelopment plan and compare them to the goals and objectives of the master plan, to make sure that they're consistent with one another. We, we did go through this consistency review process once, before the plan could originally be adopted. The same thing is going to happen now. They will look at these changes against the goals and objectives of the master plan, not of the redevelopment plan itself, though they haven't changed, because the goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan haven't changed. And the only other thing I'll just mention is, every redevelopment plan has to have a section on relationship to the master plan, as well as any surrounding plans. And that's something that's in the redevelopment plan right now, and, you know, that's something they may look at as well. But in the, at the end of the day, it's, do the goals and objectives of the master plan, are they being moved forward by the changes that are being made in this plan? Or are they not consistent with what the master plan was seeking? So it's really the goals and objectives are the comparison factors.
And, and can you relate it all to the law, that the local, can you relate it all to how it relates to that law? And maybe, Mr. Maserati can make that clarification.
Yes, the question is, how does the role of the planning board relate to the local redevelopment and housing law? And as I've said last week, I'm going to bore some of you by saying this again, any redevelopment plan or amendment to the plan can only be adopted by ordinance, which we've been talking about tonight. The local redevelopment and housing law and the, and the statute that deals with the planning board requires that the plan must be consistent with the master plan or designed to effectuate the master plan. Those two terms are in the statute. And that is something that has to be done for the initial adoption of the plan, as Annie just mentioned, has been done. And with an amendment, it has to go back to the planning board for that determination as to whether the amendment is consistent with the master plan or designed to effectuate it. The governing body may not act on adopting the ordinance until after it has received the report of the planning board with respect to that question, or 45 days has passed since the time that the governing body has sent the request to the planning board. So that's the statutory procedure, that's the relationship between these statutes, and the, the role of the planning board is really focused on consistency.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we're ready for our next commenter. Yes?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Robert Zocca, Z-O-C-C-A. I live on Ashland Road in Summit with my wonderful wife, Marilyn. We've been in Summit for 45 years, have raised our children here, and one of our daughters has moved back and is raising her children here. And we love the community and we want to see it remain vibrant. I wanted to talk a little bit further about the process that's going on here, in terms of sending on these proposed amendments to the redevelopment plan. For me, it's sending a message that if you want to send this forward, it's not just getting guidance from the planning board, but it's sending a message that you are just going through the process, that you're committed to basically doing the proposal that Toll Brothers, L&amp;M has on the table right now, and that you are basically moving the final vote back on this, back into the fall, but that you're not really attempting to make significant further changes to the plan. Instead of doing that and moving forward with this tonight, I would suggest that you take the summer, as it's been requested, and really try to redo the proposal. Sit down with L&amp;M, Toll Brothers, see if you can't make the proposal come closer to what's covered by the current redevelopment plan, rather than needing further redevelopment amendments. And take that summer, and then I would love it if we could have a town meeting in the fall, whether it's here, in Summit High School, if they finish the, the work that they're doing and so forth, someplace where they're... there's significant parking, because I think a lot of people would come, and report back at that time and tell us whether you've been able to make further amendments to the proposal. If not, explain why not. Not to have a vote to adopt the final amendments to the redevelopment plan, but maybe see if you can live within the current redevelopment plan, and see if you can't work that out with Toll Brothers L&amp;M. If you can, as I said, explain that back, and it would be delightful to do it in a town meeting. I think if we did it just devoted to that, not a special council meeting, but I think that would go a long way to having the citizens feel like you've met a promise that I think you made to us and so forth. After that, depending on where the plan is, the proposal at that point, then you can decide if you need to move forward to have further amendments to the redevelopment plan or what needs to be done. But I think listening to my fellow citizens here, many of the folks, myself included, would like to see if you can't pare back this plan and live within the current redevelopment plan. And I don't want to rehash what happened in previous weeks, but just to mention, I think I listened to a bunch of meetings where there were comments that the plan, as it was being proposed by L&amp;M Toll Brothers, did not require any amendments to the redevelopment plan. In fact, the outside planner that was brought in was criticized for making those comments and saying that revisions were needed. Now we're at a stage where I think people admit that the current plan that's on the table would require redevelopment amendments, and you're just asking the planning board to say whether it meets the master plan. So again, I ask you to not only take a pause, but take a pause in the summer to really see if you can pare back this project and get it closer to what the current redevelopment plan would allow. Thank you.
Good evening. Am I getting the mic? Yes?
Closer to your face.
Yeah, I'm a little taller than Alaska. How about now? Can you hear me now?
Yep.
All right. First off, thank you, everybody. I think democracy is incredible. I think this is exactly what democracy looks like. And I applaud you for being here tonight. I applaud you for finding a special location. I was in the foyer last week. It was fairly frustrating. This is phenomenal. And thank you to everybody in Summit for coming out to make your voices heard. I'm Jonathan Betts, Stacy Corp. You got me. I want to make sure, if the question on the table is, do we change the redevelopment plan or do we keep it as-is? I want to make sure we have a clear accounting for what the redevelopment plan, as it stands today, could be. So I caught some numbers. If I understand correctly, Sub District 2 today, under the current plan, allows for up to 40 units of housing. Is that correct?
Yes, approximately.
Okay. Sub District 4 allows for 60 to 90 units of housing.
Approximately.
Okay. Does Sub District 1 have any allowance for housing under the current plan?
No.
Okay. And then the 72 number that we're talking about for this building with Sub District 3, is that the maximum for the entire sub-district, including all the properties? Or is that at the density for the footprint of the building that we're talking about?
The 72 units is just for the footprint of the building without any bonuses.
Okay. So if all of Sub District 3 were to be developed under the current plan, what's the maximum number of units?
150.
150 under the current plan. So as I count, by my quick math, if I do 150 plus 40 plus 60, we're talking about 250 units potentially in downtown under the current plan.
Yes, potentially.
Okay. I just, I want to be really clear on that because I think it's important to have as a comparison when we talk about 133, that we're now sort of close to half what the current redevelopment plan allows for.
Yes, but the amendments would bring it down to close to half, yeah.
Right, the amendments would bring it down to close to half. So the proposed amendments to the redevelopment plan reduce the amount of new housing downtown. That means, I would assume, we reduce the amount of traffic downtown, we reduce the number of people who are new to parking downtown, probably means we reduce the estimated number of additional schoolchildren, probably means we reduce the added cost of municipal services. That would be my guess. So I want to, I want to just get clear on that. I think, you know, for concerns about parking, about traffic, about, you know, impact to the schools, there's a lot to like in the redevelopment plan, or the amendment, I should say. And then let's also talk about, you know, what happens if we don't move forward? So it was mentioned earlier that, you know, either party does have the opportunity to terminate the negotiation with a valid reason. Help me, I don't work in this space. You know, would council tabling any consideration of referral to the planning board be something that Toll could point to as a legitimate reason for exiting the negotiation?
I think that would be a question for Toll to answer, what they might consider to be a reason to move off and leave the table.
Okay.
I couldn't predict what they would do. I haven't spoken to them, I don't know.
They do want to build 133 units, and they have made clear that 72 is not financially interesting to them?
That's right, and that's what, that's what Bob Powell has calculated. I'm referring back to him.
And so let's just imagine for a moment that we don't amend the plan, and they're capped at 72, and they might pull out of the deal. You know, if anybody on council could speak to what we might expect to happen in terms of, do we take steps backwards in the redevelopment process? Do we abandon the redevelopment process? What happens to that area if Toll is to pull out of the deal?
This is, this is a new territory for me, quite frankly. I don't know, but I do know from talking to other developers around the state that they're aware of what's going on in Summit. And if these guys pull out, I don't know how easy it would be to get another developer. I don't know. I'm not saying that it's going to be hard, I'm just saying truly, I don't know.
We don't know.
And I don't know. It could be, but I don't know, and I don't know what the process will be. But I, and I shouldn't speculate because I don't know.
That's absolutely fair, Mayor. I appreciate you being responsible. I just, I want to understand, because, you know, my concern would be, especially as the firehouse goes out of use, you know, I've lived here long enough to remember the Bagel Chateau on Springfield Avenue looking pretty bombed out for several years, something I thought was an embarrassment in our downtown. I don't know how long it sat empty, but I would, I would be very concerned about an unused firehouse sitting empty right at the heart of downtown. That just seems like a magnet for a lot of undesirable activities. So, you know, I think lots of things in life are negotiation. I think we're dropping the, you know, total number of housing units in downtown by half, and in exchange, we're adding density. And I understand, you know, that's not consistent with the character of the area, you know. Across the street is the 7-Eleven with bright green and yellow and orange stripes, and I'm really disappointed that there's no bright green and yellow and orange stripes on the proposed building. You know, there's the Aston Martin dealership, you know, with its bright white walls, and unfortunately Toll Brothers isn't copying that, you know, aesthetic. There's whatever Rob Trugmans is, which I've been looking at for 20 years, and I still don't understand the architecture. But I think this is a fair negotiation. I think, you know, we're giving up a little, I think we're getting a lot back, and I for one at least support the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Betts. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. Lisa Glassban, 42 Fernwood Road. I'll be very brief. You're all sitting in the seats that you're sitting in because we, the residents of Summit, elected you, and you all serve us, and we thank you for it. I just want to make a couple observations and then just ask a couple questions that I don't think anyone's asked yet. You have over 1,500 Summit residents who signed a petition objecting to the redevelopment plan. Your constituents have written you emails, letters, they've held rallies, and for weeks they've now addressed you all publicly, not only objecting to the various portions of the plan and the revised plan, but painstakingly pointing out the problems, including the major flaws with the financial analysis, raising real concerns about our schools, the safety of our children, and articulating to you exactly why, in their view, they think this plan is going to overtax an already overtaxed city. I'd like to just ask two questions that no one's asked. The first is, I'd like to know if any of you are concerned about reelection. And the second question is, if not, if you're at all concerned about your legacy, and perhaps over the next, the time between now and September, those are things that you could think about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, Guy Hazelman, 21 Ruthven Place. Thank you all for starting with last week's meeting. I thought that was a really good meeting where there was great dialogue. And yes, it went on very late, and you were all very patient, and I think that that type of dialogue was better than prior meetings, and I wanted to thank you for that, and thank you for being here again. I have two really simple questions. So the first is that when an RFP went out for the project, I believe I heard, and if I have this wrong, let me know, that there were 13 responses. And if that's the case, 13 builders thought that they could be profitable with this project with 72 units?
No, that's not accurate. That's not accurate. Initially, we put out an RFQ, Request for Qualifications, and we wanted to know, we gave them general, very general promise. We have, we want to do a redevelopment in Summit, in this area of redevelopment. What do you think is possible? 13 responded with broad possibilities. Then we started talking, after that, we started talking about the parameters of the redevelopment plan. We came up with the parameters of the plan, not the actual plan, but the parameters. Then we sent out requests for proposals to those developers, plus others, anyone else who maybe wasn't in the first round but would like to jump into the second round. This time, we had the redevelopment plan concepts, which had been informed by what these developers, initially the 13, had told us they thought was doable in this area. Of those, then, I think the response to that RFP was maybe seven?
Eight.
Eight.
Okay, so out of the 13, once you came up with...
And they replied to us, and then from that, then we developed, we developed the redevelopment plan and chose one of them. So the original 13 had no idea, there was no redevelopment plan for the original 13.
Gotcha. And then the RFP that went out, then you came back with their feedback and came up with a redevelopment plan, basically, and were the 72 units at that point in that redevelopment plan?
I just, I want to correct something real quick. Sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead, go please.
We did not go out to the RFP process until after the redevelopment plan was adopted. So we didn't have their proposals until after the plan was adopted.
And how many units, in the redevelopment plan initially, it was the same, what we're dealing with, 72 plus the bonus?
Let me rephrase the question. Once the 72 units were put in the redevelopment plan, were there eight builders who came back responding?
The 13 came after that, yes.
It was eight after that?
The RFP.
Oh, I'm sorry, not the RFQ. Yeah, the eight came back after that, I apologize.
But a lot of them had more than 72 units. I think almost all of them did. I don't remember any that small.
They didn't have a plan at that point. They came back responding to an RFP of the redevelopment plan, which was 72 units, basically. The proposal of what they were going to build would have come later. Actually, under the statute, it's not possible to begin the process of negotiating with redevelopers until the plan is adopted. So we waited until the plan was adopted to undertake the RFP process.
Well, that's great.
So what I'm saying is, it's very simple, we're overcomplicating this. What I'm saying is, eight builders responded to the RFP of a redevelopment plan that had 72 units in it, so that those eight builders thought they would be profitable at 72 units.
Wrong. They came up with plans that were much bigger than that. I would say zero of them came up with 72 units. They were...
The plan calls for 72 plus density.
So when they responded, they came up with a plan for you to then choose one based on the RFP.
They presumed that they would be acquiring all the property and doing, is that right, Annie?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. The minimums, the 72 we're talking about is just for the project area and not for the whole Sub District 3. And what they were responding to was what was possible with the, all of them utilized the bonus incentive, and they were responding to the range of 123 to 150 for Sub District 3.
Okay. So again, the new proposal of the big building that is proposed is the footprint for the original 72 units, because bigger means that, like you said, Summit thought they could buy all the properties, meaning the insurance company, the funeral home, memorial hall, and that whole footprint that's multiple acres more means, okay, we'll get more than 72 units because we're going to have that extra property. But guess what? We don't have the extra property. We only have where that unit is now, and somehow it morphed from 72 units to 140. So my point is, sure, of course they were going to think they're going to be builder, bigger, if you had a lot more acreage, meaning those other three properties that Summit doesn't own. So again, if you're not going to get them, then they still thought this would be the logic. You can't assume you can buy a property. It's like, I can't assume I can buy my neighbor's property. How do I know he's going to sell it to me? Summit shouldn't have assumed that. But if you're not going to assume, so yeah, I would assume it's going to be a lot bigger than 72 if I buy those three units. But if I can't buy those three units, I'm going to respond thinking, well, I can still be profitable with the 72 units on the smaller footprint of the three that I didn't buy.
That actually isn't what happened, though. It's, they, a lot of them just looked at the city units, at the city-owned property, and they came back with bigger things than 72 units. You know, that's, Council member Little?
I think what we're losing here is it's always been, always in the original redevelopment plan, it was 72 units plus bonuses, and every builder anticipated using the bonuses. So to say it was always limited to 72 units is just not accurate. It was always 72 units plus bonuses allowed for different things that the developers would do in the property. So to say that anyone was ever limited to 72 units is just, it's not a fair characterization of what was originally anticipated, what was originally looked at in the redevelopment plan, and none of the builders that responded to us limited themselves to 72 units. They all anticipated using the bonuses. Is that correct, Annie?
Yes, that's correct.
But the bonus, I'll let my resident, I've used up enough time, I'll let them talk about the bonuses, but the bonuses don't add up from 72 to 140, the way that you're talking. But anyway, let me, let me go to a different thing. I overcomplicated that. You did give me clarity, though, some clarity, so thank you for that. The second thing I would say is, at the last meeting, what at least 10 of my fellow residents, I thought, exposed were question marks about the finances of the new proposed buildings. I thought that our expert really did a pretty poor job in outlining it, answering questions. And I'm not just talking about, you know, Mr. Magui, who exposed several, I think, of the problems. I think there were at least 10 residents who did the same thing. And I think finances, you know, forget the height and the distance and the parking, all that matters. But the finances, really, if it's going to cost us money and we think it's going to be a revenue source, or we miscalculate on the kids and the, finances matter. And I think really what happened last week, at least 10 residents exposed the fact that I'm not so sure we have as good a handle on the finances as we think we do. And so what I would do is, is, this is a big deal, as you can tell, so I would just encourage council to... So I would just encourage council to, I don't know how you're going to do it or what you're going to do, but try, there's a lot of brain power in this town. You could hire another financial person to take a good, hard look at it. But I think that you really do want to dot the i's and cross the t's and make sure you have the financial stuff correct. That's what I would encourage before we start, you know, blindly moving forward and just believing Mr. Powell and his work, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. It's still evening, so that's good.
Good evening.
Move forward from last week. I actually took a nap before I came here tonight, so I could be ready to last the meeting. I have a couple of questions that-
Did you just state your name, please? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Sue Roberts, 48 Oakland Place.
Thank you.
Yep. The first question I, and this happened to me last time, too. I think he left. But one of the questions I had was, we talked about things going into a redevelopment agreement that would guide if they fall behind on construction. My question is, do they also have something that goes in there that has a guideline on materials used?
Yes, the redevelopment plan itself is very specific about what materials are allowed. And then the steering committee went even further to specify colors of the materials they wanted to use, so.
Okay, so they can't substitute as they start to go through the process? Okay, thank you. The next question I have is, the affordable housing went down one unit when we reduced from 140 to 133. And I think, Marjorie, you mentioned that that is by law. So am I understanding that if we reduced, we had to reduce an affordable housing unit?
No, we didn't have to reduce an affordable housing unit, but the mix is governed by the estate regulation. COA regulations say if you have X number of units, this is the mix. You don't get to choose your mix of affordable units.
The mix of the number of bedrooms.
Right, so it says you have to have X number of studios, and X number of this, and X number of that. We don't choose that.
Across the board or just for affordable housing?
Affordable. They can do whatever they want with the rest, but the affordable is governed by COA.
So is it correct to say that in the reduction, we didn't have to reduce affordable housing? When we went from 140 to 133, we didn't have to take away an affordable housing unit? Is that correct?
We could potentially have negotiated to keep that unit.
Okay, so when Mr. Vartan said that one of the reasons in the master plan for this project is to get closer to our goal of affordable housing, and one of the first things to go when we started taking away units was, in fact, an affordable housing unit? I don't understand that rationale.
It's a financial trade-off.
For the developer.
I'm being honest with you, it is. I mean, so you're, there are fewer numbers of market rate units. That's where the revenue stream comes from. And so in order to reduce the hit to the revenue stream, you take one affordable housing unit.
Profitability for the developer, just so we're clear.
And for the city, in the revenue stream that we get, the 10% that we get.
Okay. The next question I have, and now both attorneys are gone, but I-
He's back, Mr. Robins is back.
For those of us that can't attend the planning board meeting next week, which is our opportunity to be on the record, per se, I reached out to Chris Nichols to find out if there was a similar process like there is for council meetings. And he told me there was not. Can you, he said this was a question for tonight. Can you refer me to where it's, the planning board guidelines for how meetings are run are? He said it's in the New Jersey code that covers common council or something like that.
So, Ms. Roberts, the email that we offer, letting people email us, that came through the pandemic. There is nothing statutorily that requires us to do that. And, you know, we've kept it because we've wanted to be able to allow residents to communicate. And we, but it's not, it's not something we're obligated to do. It's something we did during the pandemic and then never got rid of. So it's, it's not something that the planning board ever adopted. They stayed on Zoom for longer than we did, too. And, I'm sorry?
Planning board is testimony. I think attorneys can tell you, that's testimony as-
And Mr. Jacoby's back, too.
Yes, the planning board is testimony. I'm not sure what the question was. I stepped down for just a minute.
I think it's why planning board doesn't do emails the way we do.
For those of us that can't be at the planning board meeting next Monday.
I can't speak for the planning board. They have special, separate council. It's a separate, independent body from this one. So we don't provide guidance to them as to how they run their meetings. That's up to them as to how they do that. It is correct that their planning board does take testimony, but this is a different process that will be undertaken with respect to the review of the master plan. It's not the same as a hearing on an application. So it could be different. But I don't want to speak for the planning board.
Okay.
That's really a question for the planning board.
I did reach out to Chris Nichols and I spoke to him today. But he said it was really more a question for the attorneys.
More for the planning board attorney, though, these gentlemen.
I will work with Chris and we'll get you the statutory reason.
Okay, thank you. The last question I had is, just Annie, to clarify. You said the height of the building hasn't changed from 65.5 feet, but we are changing the height allowed in the redevelopment plan with the amendment. Is that correct?
The way the city calculates height is based off of an average of different points on the building. I don't want to get too crazy about it. And the average height is 65.5, but at points, it is 70 feet. And those points are where Morris and, sorry, Broad Street intersect. And there's a huge, there's like a 12-foot drop from, and that's where the entrance is. And that's the highest point on the building.
Okay, thanks. All right, and then I just wanted to end with saying, I was really happy to hear this evening that you're delaying the vote until the fall. I really appreciate that. I think it's a good first step at bringing everybody back together on this project. I think there's been, as I've said before, a huge break in communication. And I hope that we can continue to get to something that we're all happy with here.
Thank you.
David Fallon, Tulip Street. A lot of questions were just touched on. And I don't really know the full procedures on some of these things, but I guess it would be safe to say that I fear that the town of Summit is getting fleeced. The reason for that is, you know, from talking to some of the developers, it sounds like this property is very valuable, a lot more than $6.25 million that we're going to end up getting out of this. So in the event that it's worth, I don't know, 50, 75, $100 million down the road, not an outlandish, crazy sum. My question is, procedurally, again, how does the process work on backing out? Who has the legal obligation? Can we just say, hey, we're out? Or do you have to have a legal reason to say, hey, we're out? And then, secondly, you talked a lot, and I was very confused, and I couldn't grasp it all. But as far as bidding processes, you really didn't get any bids except for the one, right? You went through the whole process, you kind of had a collaboration, and then you had an agreement, and then they gave you a number. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
No, that's not, that's not a summary of what happened. There were these number of interviews of-
Let me, this is going to confuse me again. Let me just ask you a quick question.
Sure, go ahead.
How many bids were there that you received?
We don't use the word bid with respect to selecting redevelopers. It's, and as I mentioned last week, there is not a statutory requirement as to how it's done.
Gotcha, all right, so I don't need to cut you off with all due respect. I totally get you. So my question is, if you can-
Mr. Mayor, would you let him answer, please?
Let him answer, and then you can say what you want to say.
The process calls, called for, was used here, a request for proposals. In response to that, there were a number of responses. There were a number of interviews of those responses. And from that group, this redeveloper was selected to be designated as a conditional redeveloper. And we signed a conditional redevelopment and escrow agreement, which I have to say, again, calls for the developer to pay the fees of the city's consultants. We are not working for Toll and L&M. I heard somebody say that earlier. We have to correct that impression. We work for the city.
So my question, I guess, is, if we said, hey, it's not what we think, in fairness and all due respect, perhaps, I know we've heard a lot of people talk about the experts. We're relying on our experts. We were using the experts' financial opinions. Maybe they're wrong, maybe. If we say they're wrong, let's assume they are, can we scrap the Toll brothers and then go out to a bidding process? Are we allowed legally to do that?
The city has flexibility under that conditional designation agreement to make that kind of a judgment. A city must go-
Who makes that?
The city.
The council?
But governmental action is always measured by the test as to whether it's arbitrary, capricious, or unreasonable. So we would want to make sure that in making such a decision, there wouldn't be a challenge on that basis. So it has to be based on-
So could new information, new financials come to light that would determine-
There's a variety of factual issues that would have to be considered there. In order, if I could just finish, in order to avoid a litigation that would seek compensation, if not terminated without regard to being arbitrary, capricious, or unreasonable. So as a lawyer for the city, I always want to make sure that the city would be protected under such a circumstance. So there's a whole variety of facts that would happen.
I would imagine the lawyer would also want to make sure we protect the city financially in case we're getting fleeced.
Of course.
Last question.
That's why we're here.
Thank you. The last question I have, and Mayor, you said that you wanted to introduce the ordinance tonight on the first reading so it can be referred to the planning board for a consistency review. That's a requirement for any ordinance, if I understand that correctly, to introduce it on first reading. It's not necessary in order for them to send it down, right? The council, you could not, you could instruct the planning board to simply perform a consistency review of the proposed ordinance without asking for it, without introducing it? Is that, I don't really understand that.
My-
No, the statutory procedure calls for the introduction of the ordinance, but not the adoption of it until there's a consistency review by the planning board.
And how does that work with that second reading that the other gentleman mentioned?
The process that is on the agenda for tonight is to introduce the plan amendment and then a resolution, a separate resolution, that would authorize the clerk to forward the plan amendment to the planning board for its review.
And can the council choose not to introduce it at this point?
Yes, it's a, this is a governmental action that is in the hands of the elected officials of the community. It is their decision.
All right, so it'd be my request that you ask them to look into it without making it an ordinance.
I don't think we can ask them to look into it without-
Right, can we ask the planning board to look into, do a consistency hearing without introducing the plan amendment?
Yes, the statute simply requires that there not be the adoption of the ordinance until after you have that. That's the way the statute works.
Okay, thank you.
So is that, am I, is that right? Am I understanding that correctly?
I think we both do.
Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Kevin McGooey, it's not Gooey. 113 Woodland Avenue. I just want to follow up on that point. When you talked about the city's ability to get out of working with Toll and L&M, it can't be capricious and whatever, right? So do you think that if we introduced the ordinance? Because right now, it's very simple, right? They have not presented us with a proposal that fits within our current redevelopment plan. So it's a very easy out for us.
I would not agree.
You wouldn't think that that's a reason? Because we are under no obligation.
No, I would not. Your question is, simply because they have submitted a proposal that requires an amendment to the redevelopment plan, that that would be in and of itself a basis to terminate? I would say no. Because that is not unusual. That's the way, as I explained last week, that's the way many redevelopment projects go. And we have been engaged in a very extensive negotiation of a very thick redevelopment agreement on that premise. So I wouldn't say that that would be enough of a basis.
Would it be better or worse?
Would want be better.
Would it be better to work, better or worse, if we did not move forward and introduce new zoning to fit the building? Would it be better or worse if we didn't do that?
No, I think it would be better if we did it under the circumstances that we have been involved in, in the negotiations with the redevelopers. Because that's the course we've been on. And it would make sense to continue that course and follow that process.
Like a second opinion. Greg, I want to talk to you briefly about the master plan.
Mr. McGooey, you direct all of your comments. No, you don't, you're not pulling individual council members. That's not how it works.
Greg Vartan talked about-
Mr. Jacoby, could you please?
I'm not, I'm just saying what he said before.
So the way it works is you have to address the council president. You can reference that the council member Vartan made a comment.
That's what I was doing.
Okay, so you can do that. You can't question individual council people.
Okay, go ahead, sorry about that.
So the number one goal of the master plan, to be clear, was to protect the character of Summit. It was to not have overdevelopment, okay? Another major issue we had was parking, okay? That we've messed up for decades, trying to get parking correct. And then another thing that we talked extensively, when you talk about alternative housings, and Nora, we talked about this, and Nora, you talk about it, is the empty nester issue. So I think that this proposal violates those three main things. So you can really dig into the master plan and find something what maybe this addresses or clears. Those are the big things. So make no mistake about it. This doesn't really accomplish what the goals of the master plan, the main goals of the master plan were. I mean, number one, literally, is to protect the character of Summit and protect it from overdevelopment. And then as far as the financials, I think the financials, I mean, I, like, I didn't feel great about dismantling that guy. But I hope you realize, he really gave a lot of misleading information. And what really bothered me is he's supposed to be our fiduciary. And that report did not sound like somebody who was our fiduciary. A couple of other things as far as the height. I think the height you told us previously was 62 feet tall at the corner of Chestnut and Broad Street. And it went to 65 feet on Broad Street and Morris Avenue. And now Annie's saying that the average is 65 and 1/2 feet. So obviously, the height of the building has changed from the information that we received previously.
Ms. Lindling, do you want to answer that? I don't, I'm not sure what-
Yeah, the plan has been changing regularly as we've been working through different iterations.
Well, the last time you said the height, you said 62 feet at the corner. It's, you said 62, okay. I just want to make sure that, it seems that the height has changed. I'm not trying to be argumentative.
It is still 62 feet at Cedar and Broad.
Right, but, so it has to be higher than 65 feet in a lot of places to get to an average of 65 and 1/2 feet. Before, it was 62 and 65. That's what we heard, it was 65 feet. But anyway, as far as the school in this new plan, again, what really concerns me is, we've heard several times you saying, we're hearing from you, we're listening to you. This new plan addresses the issues- you, this new plan addresses the issues we had. I don't know if you understood what we were saying. What we're saying is this building is simply too large, right? And what we got back was a building that is at least the same height, and they just shuffled around some apartments. And I just think that's very disingenuous to say that, like, we listened to you. I mean, it added 35. Did everybody read my last LTE? Did you guys? So I don't have to repeat it all, right? I mean, like, you've added, you've added a number of additional bedrooms, and that's the only place really kids will be. And Powell estimate went from 24 to 32, but the school's stymographer was 35 under the old plan. And I don't think, have they had a chance to review it? The new mix?
I don't know.
Right.
I doubt it.
If you do the math, if you just do the percentage increase, it would go to 46, I think. But I think really, their math probably will be over 50. So I think that, like, you've actually-
How do you know that?
Because I think that their math probably was a lot higher on the multiple bedrooms. Because they're not going to have a lot more kids on the one-bedroom or studios.
No.
And the mix for the multiple bedrooms has gone up significantly. So it just logically, I don't know, because they haven't done it, but I would think that that would be the case. But that's-
It's certainly a question we can ask them.
Right. So effectively, and then at the same time, like people said, you dropped unaffordable housing unit. So listening to us was giving the same-sized building with more costs, more profitability to the developer, because they don't have to, you know, have another, they could have another affordable housing unit. They could have as many affordable housing units as they want, but they don't have them. So that's what we got out of it. I think the one thing that, when we talk about the financials, something that I looked at, we really haven't got a lot of financials, and I volunteer, I'll help you guys, like, as much as you hate me, you will love me being over there. John already hates me, so he'll really hate me. Has anybody looked at kind of, did you see their performas that were up on the city website? Their pro forma for their financials that they put up, they were dated October of last year? You guys saw them?
Yeah. I don't remember.
Did you see, if you see the average rents that they had in that calculation? Because you understand that the purchase price, and Powell is saying, the developer needs to get this rate of return. He can't, you know, if he doesn't get this rate of return, he's not going to do the business. There's competition for capital. So they'll give you what, and we haven't seen Powell's rate of return, I've asked for it, but he'll tell you they're earning some rate of return, and that's based off of their numbers. I looked at what their numbers were, what they expected to see for rent, receive for rent, and I compared it to what the Upton is renting at. Okay? Has anybody done any of that kind of analysis?
I have not.
Of the Upton?
Yeah.
Well, we know what the Upton's charging, but I don't know that those are comparable properties. I'm sure that Powell has looked at that. You know, we're aware of the Upton.
Right. Well, I just did a quick look, and, like, almost the exact same size two-bedroom apartments at the Upton. The, here's a couple listings right now. There's not a lot for rents, obviously, all-
No, there's rental bidding wars all over the place.
Yeah. So, for a one, or a two-bedroom, two-bath, 1,136-square-foot apartment, they had it, they're renting it at, starting at $5,388 a month, okay? When I looked at, what happened to it? When I looked at the, oh, I can look at my phone, sorry. When I looked at the developers for the same-sized apartment, a two-bedroom, two-bedroom unit with 1,109 square feet, so, you know, within a couple square feet, they had the monthly rent at $3,837. And on another one of, another two-bedroom, two-and-a-half baths, the Upton's renting at $6,233. So these are between 36% and 56% higher rents than what the developers are assuming. So this building is going to be much more profitable for them, and it's going to be worth a lot more than what they're telling you. The purchase price of this land should be much higher than it is.
Mr. McGoye, I'm not sure that that pro forma that you saw was what Dr. Powell based his conclusions on. So let's not jump to conclusions here. That was something that was put up. I'm not sure how it ended up on the website, to be honest.
Oh, it was taken down, right.
Well, it was not, it was put there, I think, for the unit mix, and I don't, you know-
The pilot program revenues and the NOIs that are represented on this pro forma are almost identical to the pilot program revenues and the NOIs that he had in his initial report. So I think that it's very close to the numbers, if not exactly the numbers he was using. Interestingly enough, the NOI went up on his last presentation, and that was because I think they got rid of the affordable housing unit. So I think that, like, the problem is, is that, I said a while ago, you guys need much, the financial analysis has not been done. It's not been done. It's all been dictated by the developer. And Powell is just taking whatever they say, using their numbers, and then just arguing why it should be, we should do this. The other thing, too, as far as-
That's actually not true. I'm going to push back on that as well.
Okay. Well, if you watch Mr. Powell's presentations in other municipalities, they're literally, word for word, he uses the exact same phrases all the time. So it seems to be a bit of a cookie cutter kind of thing. But I think that a lot of what he presented in that presentation, I thought, was very misleading to his client, and his client is us. And I think I demonstrated that, or I hope I did. The other thing, too, when we look at, like, and it's important to understand, and I, I talked to John and those guys after the last council meeting for a half hour. I was shocked that they talked to me for a half hour, but they did. And I came out of there more confident that I'm not wrong about anything. And one thing that I think people need to understand, and the original redevelopment plan, I've said this to you guys, it encompassed a much bigger area. And the problem is, is over time, and I talked to the developers about this, over time, it's been whittled down to now, we're talking about a 1.6-acre lot. So we're trying to jam everything onto a 1.6-acre lot, right? And that's when, you know, and I said, listen, to the guys, the developers, I said, look, I do feel bad for you. Like, you thought you were going to get all this different stuff, and it just slowly got whittled away, so you never would have come here for 1.6 acres. And now you're trying to jam something that is, doesn't fit onto this small piece of property. Like, when you talk about, oh, well, we're losing the number of units, and, yeah, but we're getting this monstrosity of a building that doesn't fit within the town. And the reason, and because we have this monstrosity of the building, and this is what they really keyed me in on, because I think you had, in one of your meetings, in one of our meetings, you said, the developers knows the parking that they need, right? And when I talked to them, I said, okay, well, now, you know, because you're trying to jam everything in, you've lost all this property, you're putting it all on one spot, you're putting a building that doesn't fit on the piece of property, it's got to be enormous, much bigger than what anybody envisioned, and it can't be parked, and you're not parking it. And he's like, well, the reason we don't have parking is because we can't fit it on the spot. We can't fit it on the lot. We'd have to dig down. Nobody does that. Are you kidding? And how much money that would cost? Nobody would do that. And my reply to him is like, well, if you put the properly-sized building on the properly-sized lot, you wouldn't have a parking problem. So they understand that this-
Can I just interrupt you for a moment? I don't know if you were here in the very beginning, but one of the reasons we postponed this whole vote, and for even discussing the redevelopment agreement until the fall, is because I said that questions from the community had been raised, we needed to get the correct answers, we need to figure these things out before we moved ahead. So you're pointing out some things that have been pointed out by you before, and I am grateful for that, and I respect it. We are going to continue this conversation. We're not voting on this this summer.
Yeah, but I don't think, I honestly, and I think everybody here, and I think you should understand why, we've lost a little bit of faith, and I think just introducing it tonight is the wrong thing to do.
I understand that there's a lot of trust that's lost in this country, not just in this town. But I do think that we are trying very hard to do our level best from what we think is the right thing for this community. I'm sorry you don't believe us. I'm sorry you don't trust us.
I don't think, why do you need to introduce this? I don't understand why you need to do that.
Because we want to move this forward, at least the process of getting to the planning board. We want to make sure we dot every i and cross every t.
But you can, you can present this to the planning board and ask them if they believe, if it's their determination. He said that to approve it, they need to do it. But you can bring, you can, you don't need to introduce this tonight to have the planning board review it next week. He's shaking his head.
Mr. McGoye, we're now over 60 minutes. Could you please wrap up? I asked-
Well, that's why I waited, I waited so that people could leave-
I understand, but you know what? But there's still, we still have other things to do.
I just want, one thing for Susan, just to-
No, no, you're not doing, through me, just direct.
I just want to make sure that Susan was talking before, and I, maybe I'm unclear, I wasn't sure if she understood the reason for this ordinance. Like, right now, we have a redevelopment plan that Mike McTernan was saying adhered to the original master plan. And this redevelopment plan sets the zoning for this area. What they want to introduce tonight is something that completely changes that to fit a building. So it's kind of the tail wagging the dog. That's what this is.
It also, it also addresses concerns, it also addresses many concerns raised by members of the community about the number of potential and future residential units on the entire area. And it's capped, so it can't, we have no residential, and just subject to two or four.
Yeah, but you-
And that is something else that's being put onto this, in this amendment, and taking out the post office.
Right. But there's not enough information on what the trade-offs for that is, because we're-
You want more residential units?
See, this, I think we would be, I think we would all be fine with more residential units that fit within the character of Summit. I think you're misunderstanding our issue.
Well, I was, I urge you, I urge you to go back to the May 2021 Zoom meeting where the plans were initially laid out, and the big, big complaint by the people on this from the community was residential on the lot between the library and the Y. People hated it.
Right, well, that's a, that's a big issue, but I'm saying-
Well, so we're taking it out. It's not happening.
Well, you don't need that, you don't, just because you're doing that, I mean, you understand the issue with this is that box they were holding up. It's the size. It's, so I don't think that you-
Mr. McGoye, please wrap up.
I think you think that you're addressing a concern that we really haven't articulated. Our concern is this sheer enormous size of this building, and whether you like it or not, that literally changes the definition of the master plan, because that now becomes the character of Summit. That is included in the character of Summit. And I don't, no matter what you say, you cannot ever guarantee, you cannot guarantee that the owners of the funeral home and the owners of the insurance company will never be able to build residential units there. You will not be able to, you cannot say that.
I understand.
So, and when they go, they'll look and say, look at this, 83-unit-per-acre thing, which the unit-per-acre, I don't even think you should do that. There should be some floor area coverage ratio issue in there to control the size, so you don't just do this 140 to 133, but a taller, bigger building. I mean, it's ridiculous. But anyway, sorry, thank you. I'll help you guys. I've said it from the very beginning, I can help you. I promise I can help you.
Madam President, if I could just, if I could just speak to the Upton issue briefly. I did have a conversation about that issue with Mr. Powell some many months ago, and he explained that he took that into consideration and considered the difference between that building and this proposed building, swimming pools, concierge, other kinds of amenities in that location.
Yep, Mr. McGoye, you're done. Please sit down.
If I could just finish, and then I'll be happy to listen to you. I'll be happy to listen to you if I could just finish what I was saying.
Let Mr. Marizidi finish. Kevin?
May I finish?
Enough. Mr. McGoye, let him finish.
And he mentioned further that he looked at this building in the context of other communities like Summit, and other locations like where this building will be, not next to a golf course with those views. But he looked at Westfield, Chatham, Madison, and similar-type locations to where this building will be. I thought that would be appropriate to make that point in his absence.
Yeah, I would think it's located better because you can walk right to a train.
Mr. McGoye, it's the next person's turn. You've had your turn. Go ahead.
Gennaro D'Agostino, moved to Summit about 2004. Actually, I've been coming to Summit since about '86, when my aunt and uncle moved out here. And I'm speaking here on a few different viewpoints here. I'm not going to talk about the character of Summit and what this building may or may not portray. I've spent about 30 years in finance, more than half of it in tax credit deals, specifically low-income housing tax credit deals, affordable housing tax credit deals. And I want to echo something that Guy said earlier about the financials. It's a very important piece of this puzzle. If they're buttoned up, that's a really good sign for the project. If they're not, that's not such a good sign, especially when it comes to getting financing, securing it, keeping it in place. Another aspect of this is that affordable housing deals, affordable housing tax credits are a very successful government program. They're also very controversial, they're also very misunderstood. And when we talk about rent at this level, at the other level, when we talk about returns, Toll Brothers returns, that's only a piece of the picture. And I encourage everybody to inform themselves, because the other aspect of this, and the reason why I'm talking, speaking here now, is because I've seen and heard a lot from both sides. I'm very new to the issue. And I've heard a lot of statements, some accusations, some allegations. If there's something that's not been done properly, that needs to be investigated. There's what government must do and what government should do, just like there's what citizenry must do and what the citizenry should do.
What are you suggesting, Mr. D'Agostino?
I'm suggesting that when someone makes an allegation to do your job, that they make sure that there's something specific that they're bringing up, rather than just doing it for, you know, a soundbite.
Okay, thank you.
I'm certainly not making any accusations myself. I'm bringing it up because when I hear things like, there's this kind of return that they should or shouldn't be getting, or there's X amount of feet, or whatever the case may be, as Patrick Moynihan, Daniel Patrick Moynihan said, everybody's entitled to their own opinion, but they're not entitled to their own facts. So when we talk about a project of this size, I really encourage people to look at the finances and to inform themselves of every aspect of this, because there is a very important part of this that has consequences down the line that you may not think affects you today, or you may think it affects you adversely today, but down the line, I'll bring up just the parking garage, for example. Years ago, when the parking garage went in by the train station, that was a huge controversy. I remember it back in the 80s. And now look at it. Imagine if that didn't get built. So when we talk about these types of decisions, the only round decisions are the decisions that were not prepared or willing to deal with the consequences of, both intended and unintended. that were not prepared or willing to deal with the consequences of, both intended and unintended. The last thing I'll bring up is something that's very near and dear to my heart. You see my sweatshirt, the Police Athletic League. People talk about the strain on services. That's a very important aspect of this, okay? Taking into account whether it's the police, fire department, first responders, garbage collection. Yes, it's very important. But I urge people to take that into account when they go home tonight and they leave their fobs in their car, okay? The reason why I'm kind of bringing in all these angles is because I feel that this is a very important issue, but it's not just this building, okay? It's how we treat each other face-to-face, on Facebook. It's what we use to further our views, to further our opinions. If we're talking about something specific, let's get to those facts. Instead of making allegations on both sides and then walking away for a soundbite, if there's something that someone has found that's inappropriate or that's factually incorrect, bring it to light, talk about it, discuss it. But when it comes to opinions, we have to park those and deal with the facts, because if we're just going off of opinions, then both sides of this argument fall apart very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Karen Hadley, 91 Maple Street. A lot of questions. It happens at the end of the night. I was here till 1:30 last week. Things that have come up, not come up, that I think we should have some answers to. First thing is, we talk about parking. We talk about losing the parking at the corner of Broad and Morris. We're not addressing the parking that we've lost where the new firehouse is being built. So I don't, when is that part going to come up? That, you know, that, I know that lot was used for, I don't know if it was still happening, but I know people used to be able to pay $10 to park there overnight, $10 a night.
I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Vartan. Yeah, yeah.
Are we good? Hi, yes. So the, the firehouse, the new firehouse, is located on what was the Broad Street East commuter lot, right? So there were approximately 140 parking spaces there. And partially, that parking is going to stay after the construction of the firehouse is done. I think it's 45 to 50 spaces. I might be off on that number that I should have Rita McNanny check on, and if I'm wrong, I'll get back to you. But then, the, the other spaces that have, were used for commuter parking, largely during COVID, were not being used, because people were not coming and parking there. Now, 125 of the spaces in the Broad Street lot, in the garage, rather, 125 at the top level, have been converted to commuter spaces for what is $12 a day for commuters who are coming into Summit. Of those 125, I think, I have to get the numbers from Michael, but of those 125, not all are being utilized. And the rest of the garage is about, I think, 60% full also. So if, if, that, that's how that's being addressed right now, because there are more people returning to work, residents who are returning to work, non-resident commuters who are returning to work. If we were to return to hypothetically 2019-level demand on parking from both residents and from non-residents, what could happen is a couple of different things. The first is you could valet cars into that parking garage, which is a way to fit more cars in there. That was part of the plan pre-pandemic. The other option, which is more expensive and requires closing the garage, is you could build another level on top of that garage also. It's built that you could add more there. So that's the, that's a shorter, that's the short answer to the question, I hope, that I've answered.
Yeah, I'm just worried, I'm, I'm hopeful people go back to offices and go back to work and go back to travel and the whole everything.
Excuse me, Karen, could you talk closer into the.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and we're, we're hopeful that the parking revenue returns to 2019 levels as well, yeah.
I bet. So, talking about parking garages, the proposed possibility of a garage in back of the post office. When we discover, oops, we need more, the parking back that we lost. Who, who pays for new parking garages? Does that come out of taxes? Is that a, I, I'm very not versed in how things are paid for. If you build a new parking garage and you get a bond, money from the bond comes from taxpayer money?
Well, if the parking. I'll let Michael answer that. I mean, the parking utility, yeah, we'll let Michael answer that.
As far as the public parking, if we were to build a garage, that would be financed by, by the city. It would be something you would go out for debt financing, and then you would be paying off that annual debt service with tax dollars.
Okay, so by the city, meaning the taxpayers pay for a new, so when this new, if this giant new building is built and we need the parking garage, that's another strain on the taxpayers.
So let me, let me just qualify that statement. It, it all depends on how you're financing. If in relationship to the redevelopment project, it would be a negotiated deal in this. As, as far as just building a straight parking garage, that would be something that the parking utility would be issuing debt, and the user fees out of that would be paying that debt service. So in this redevelopment project that's contemplating public parking, that's a negotiated term that would, and who pays for that would be to, you know, determine during that negotiation.
And the developers aware of this, that they may need to pay for that too?
It's not, it's not an easy determination, I can tell you that.
I know, but, you know, I remember when they closed two schools, I was, I was young, but my mom was on committees. When they closed our two elementary schools, they said, "Oh, people will never start and have this many children again." Well, we do, we did. There's a, the, the schools were expanded. So you really can't be, you know, have all the answers of what's going to happen in the future, like what's going to happen with how many kids are going to be in this building. You can't say, "It's this number of people." Oh, you can't move in because you have this many children. The council has said, "The schools will get paid for. The schools will get their money." Well, where do the schools get their money from the county? Where does the county get their money? From taxes. Our taxes will then go up to cover this. I mean, you just keep saying, "Oh, they'll get the money." There's no magic wand for the county to come up with this money. So at the end of the day, our taxes will go up again to fund this pilot program of people not paying school taxes. So it, it's still a little disturbing. The pilot program is disturbing. When there's lack of parking and, you know, we see it downtown. How many, how long do stores sit empty for? That store's empty, there's $0 coming into the city.
And right now, our vacancy rate is under 2% downtown.
Our, hey, you don't have to tell me that.
Well, I'm telling the rest of the audience, you know.
But it is a wonderful vacancy rate, you know, that it's, it's the lowest it's ever been. Talk to Westfield, where the traffic has gotten ridiculous because of all their new construction. There's, the vacancy in Westfield had gotten out of control. And, you know, I don't know what it is at this moment, but their downtown was losing stores left and right. You know, we do have stores that have sat, thankfully, that, you know, our, Nancy does a great job bringing people into take. You know, there's still a couple of big spots that, you know, hopefully are, are going to be filled. Talking about how much the property is worth. I did some looking on some commercial properties in Summit. I, I found a 0.48-acre piece of property, does have existing old apartments on it. It's on the market for $4.5 million in Summit. It's a lot smaller than the piece of property we're selling for $6.25 million at the end of the day. So, you know, if you want to talk about values of commercial property, that's, you know, whether that's a comparison or not, it's in Summit. It's $4.5 million for less than a half of acre, an acre. Talking about the communication. Met a neighbor yesterday. He's probably the closest resident in a single-family home, probably any resident, to where this proposed building is. He has no idea. His wife does. He has zero idea of what this is coming in that will be within sightline of his front door. And that's sad. He's, and he's, he's not an elderly person who may not be on the computer. He's, you know, younger than me. And he had no idea. And I told him, "Well, you will have an idea when the parking comes to your street, because you'll be within 250 feet of the corner."
I'd like to correct that. That's, I think there's been a misunderstanding about the parking. It's not to, it's not that there's parking 250 feet from every corner of the redevelopment. I think, I think we need to clarify that, because there's, it was, I, I saw the email that said that there was going to be parking on Prospect. There is not. They said there was going to be parking on Kent Place and Springfield. Those are, that's absolutely not correct. But I'd like to have Ms. Hanlan answer what the parking is.
I think, and I know it's been a while since we talked about this, but how we kind of narrow down the parameters in the process. The redevelopment plan is just allowing for there to be negotiations for the, where those spaces will be. The 250 feet is the walkable distance that you, that's used. You create a redevelopment plan, and then what Joe's been referring to, that has worked on forever, is the redevelopment agreement. And in it, it says exactly where those spaces can be. So they're going to be where you saw on, well, I mean, that, that's the exhibit that is attached currently to a draft redevelopment agreement if it moves forward. Those are the only spaces that they can be.
I believe he said the other night, it could be 250 feet from any corner of the district.
That is how the redevelopment plan is being written, but to affect, for them to be able to build, they have to have a redevelopment agreement adopted. And the redevelopment agreement will, it will, and it does refer specifically to that exhibit. And it literally says seven spaces between, you know, Morris and Maple on Broad Street, for example. I, don't quote me if that's not the right number, but.
No, because they're making up a lot of spaces in this area, so I.
The number, so it's going to refer to the, all the exhibits that, that we shared the other day. And they will only be allowed to add spaces there or change the designations there. And the, the main reason that that was even considered was so that there was interim parking until the garage gets built. That's not considered a permanent solution. It could be. It's something that, you know, we've talked to the Parking Authority about, you know, if, if it would work based off their observations and numbers. But the intent was that it's going to be a temporary solution for, you know, until the, the garage is built.
Well.
But yes, it, they can only be where you saw on that image, which is.
Until it's not, until they say, "Well, we have permission for 250 feet from each corner."
No, that's not how.
Why did he say that? I mean, that's very upsetting.
Because we're talking about two different things. We're talking about the 250 feet is what's in the redevelopment plan. It talks about not all the parking has to be on site. It can be within 250 feet of the building.
From any corner, he said.
Yes, but that's the redevelopment plan. But the binding agreement with the redeveloper, which we are not yet talking about, but, you know, we're, that's, we're putting that off till the fall. But that, we, we showed at the last meeting a, a map that showed where all the parking spaces were.
It was hard to see with the screens.
Right, but you can find it online. It's on the city's website. And that map designates where all the spaces are going to be. They're all on Morris and Broad. And none of them are on Prospect, or Springfield, or Kent Place, or Locust, or any of the other side streets, okay? And there's not the ability to do that. We control the parking. The city controls the parking. These are, these are permitted spots. You have to be a, have a resident permit, or, you know, resident overnight permit, or a resident commuter permit, or an employee commuter permit. So there are specific people who can use these spots, and they're designated. It's not going to happen later that it goes someplace else, okay?
Yep. That being said, the one thing we can control in all of this, because we can't control how many kids are going to show up in this building. We can't control how many cars are going to be in these apartments. What we can figure out is, we can do a, a trial on Morris Avenue and put parking, let people park on Morris Avenue and see what a disaster that is going to cause. I mean, I, by your face, I can tell you don't like my idea, but.
No, I, I.
I, I just, you know, it's something we can see, because we all know how bad Morris Avenue is. It is, it's atrocious. And to put parking there and take away, you, you have like kind of two lanes, two lanes. It's, you're going to take away an entire lane. I don't know which, how you're going to adjust it. I'm sure the line's going to move. But it is something, when they did, they did a parking study to put in the circle by the train station. There were cones, there were lines, there were whatever. Let's, when, in September, when we're back to full tilt in town, I'm sure it would be kind of bad now too, but let's do a, a real-time traffic study and see what happens, you know? Park all the city cars along Morris Avenue and Broad Street and all the spots, all day, all night, and see what happens to traffic, because traffic is awful as it stands now. And to put overnight parking, to put permanent parking there, you know, there's a reason it's not there now.
One of the reasons it's not there now is because the firehouse is there.
On Morris Avenue?
No, not on Morris, but on, on Broad.
Okay, but Morris Avenue. But Broad Street, that section of Broad Street, we all know, nothing is going on there. There's, you know, there's rarely any traffic there. There's rarely any backup there. It's all over by where the new firehouse is going. So, you know, God bless them getting out to a fire, but.
It's worth discussing.
It's, it's, you know, it's something that we can prove in advance, rather than saying, "Oops, we didn't know."
Point taken.
Can I add two things about parking? The first thing about parking is, in addition to what has been outlined in the, in the exhibit that we showed last week, we talked about the possibility of making the lot that's currently behind the post office now, converting it from an employee-only lot to a resident or employee lot, right? And that's another few spaces for people that can use it for whether they're parking there during the day and they're going to the train, or if they have an overnight parking permit, they can park there as well. The other thing is, and I guess it's like a little bit of a plug, is we do have overnight parking available in certain parts of Summit. There are seven streets where there are apartment buildings. And we currently have an option for people to go on the city website and get and pay for an overnight parking permit that allows you to park your car on the street. These are places where there are already apartment buildings where there may not be adequate parking, right? So the concepts, the concept of overnight parking is, in certain places in town, not new. And I think there are other places in town, obviously, where we wouldn't want to talk about overnight parking ever. But I think the, the concept of overnight parking on the street some places is something that's already happening. And I think that's just something to point out.
But not on our main thoroughfares, not on our county roads, not on our road that we have a middle school on, not on a road that, that half the town travels down to get to the high school. You, you know, you did it many years. You know, you can't count New England Avenue as, you know, being a, a road that has a considerable amount of traffic. I mean, ambulances constantly, up and down, getting to Overlook Hospital, up and down Morris Avenue.
I think you're making a good point, Karen, and we'll definitely look into it.
I'd like to see a real time. My last thing, I think, I believe our, at the last meeting, we were told that this building would not use, or increase any city services. And now tonight, you mentioned a garbage pickup there by the city. We were told before that that was all going to be private trash pickup, recycling. Everything was private in that building. And you did say tonight that there would be at least one day a week of trash pickup in that building.
I said it could be. I didn't say it would be, and I think that's a question.
I don't know. We heard would be. We heard that there would be.
Yeah, I, I know what I said. What I said was, that's certainly an option in the negotiation where we pick up in that area. It could happen that we would be able to pick up. However, I know that, that this particular building would require multiple-day pickups. Therefore, they would arrange for that garbage service to pick up. So my, my understanding. So my, my understanding is that's what would happen. It wouldn't necessarily be the city picking up garbage from that site. It, it certainly could on one day because we go in that area. I think that's perhaps what the council person said, but.
That's a lot.
I stand by what I said.
That's a lot. And that's a city service that's going to a non, I mean, I know pilot, but non-taxpaying building. That's, you know, I guess, that's it. I'm just afraid of what else is going to happen in negotiations. There's a lot of ifs and, and things that we haven't, we haven't been told and, you know, transparency is, is everything in this. But please, don't vote on this. Don't, don't do whatever it is that you wanted to do tonight. Let it all go to, when, after you can have a town hall meeting like was promised, when you revamp the project, revamp, talk about not, all the ifs and maybes and the, the garbage and the parking garage and who's paying and who's negotiating. Get it all together over the summer. Talk about it again when you can decide whether something that this, this town blatantly doesn't want, something so overbuilt, you know, bring it back.
Are there any other comments? Good evening.
Hi, Helena Levis. I live on Plain Street in Summit. I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but something really hit me, actually, two things. I'm a contractor in New York City via suppression. I do sprinklers. One was when someone asked, well, what if this ordinance is not passed? What, you know, what's the plan? And everybody sort of looked at one another and there's no plan B from what I could, you know, hear from anybody. What if the ordinance is not passed? What if you don't go with Toll Brothers? What if they back out? You know, what are you going to do? And no one has a suggestion as to what's going to happen then. The other thing is, since I'm in construction, I'm well aware of delays. And there are always delays. I mean, I've been a contractor for 12 years and if three projects got finished on time when they were supposed to, that's pretty good. I mean, there are always delays and you could say, well, if they don't hit certain milestones, they can be terminated and everything like that. I'm still waiting for money that, for projects that have been terminated between a contractor and a developer or the city, like six years for them to go through legal ramifications in order to get paid. So it's not simply, oh, well, they can get fined, they have to do this, they have to do that. Bottom line is, stuff happens and you wind up in court and it could be years. So you don't ever want to terminate somebody in terms of a developer because where are you going to go? Who's going to take a project over? You know, how are you protecting the town from something like that? The city from, from that sort of thing?
I believe that Mr. Marazidi is the one who should take that question.
Yes, you pointed out that there would be termination rights, which I explained earlier, events of default, there are opportunities to cure if there's an event of default. You don't like to terminate. That's exactly true. And, but there does come a time when maybe you have to. And those provisions are written into the draft redevelopment agreement that we're still negotiating and hasn't been finalized. But litigation may ensue. It may, and it does take time.
Right, it does take time. So what does the town do then? How much, what provision have you made, you know, if that happens? How does the town, you know, survive through that?
You can't prevent people from litigating. All you can do is try to succeed in defeating that litigation. And that's what we're trying very hard to anticipate and, and cover all those bases. Can't predict the future. And I wouldn't stand here and tell you that there's a silver bullet that would protect against difficulties occurring if there is an extended delay. There are, there are remedies. Remedies are only as good as the people you're dealing with. And so that's one of the factors in choosing the redeveloper that has been conditionally chosen here.
Right. And the developer doesn't exactly have the best reputation in terms of their buildings.
I think a lot of people would disagree with you about that.
Well, I know people who live in toll houses. Okay. And the other thing is the public utilities, like water, sewer, electricity. How is that all being, you know, handled? Who's responsible for, for that?
Water and sewer?
Sewer, yeah. You're, you're adding.
Well, so our sewer capacity in Summit is eight million, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Schreger, eight million gallons a day. And we use currently 4.9 million in Summit. And this building is estimated to do an additional 30,000 to 50,000 a day. So there's plenty of capacity. Plus, when they build the building, they have to do infrastructure work to improve the sewers as they exist now. But these are all things and these responsibilities that have to be finished and put into the redevelopment agreement that we are not voting on in this summer and we're still talking about and we're making changes and we're listening and we won't be discussing and putting anything about the redevelopment agreement into place until the fall.
But the sewer, the sewer hookups, they pay, the redevelopers will pay for the sewer hookups.
And the electricity.
And sewer fees are paid for by the homeowners the same way that, you know, that the rest of us pay, you know, an annual sewer fee. They'll be paying the same. Each resident will be doing that.
Okay, one last question. When this does come to a vote, will that be an open or closed session?
Open.
It's always open.
Okay.
And there'll be meetings in, plenty of meetings in advance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments? Okay, so I'm going to close the comment.
Counsel President, we have one email.
Email.
And this email is from Beverly Doral Brown at Kent Place Boulevard. And she writes, despite the plans of residents to hold this meeting when more people are in town, city council has forged ahead. I'm unfortunately away and therefore request my comment to be registered and or read at tomorrow's meeting. As a lifelong resident of Summit, I am hard-pressed to recall an issue that has stirred such controversy than the Broad Street development plans. Why is it that mayor and council are turning a deaf ear to the impassioned arguments of residents and knowledgeable financial professionals who are calling to halt this project? The numbers of disgusted residents are mounting. The rational facts presented to council can't be ignored. When you are before residents tomorrow night, remember that this decision will be forever linked to your names. Do the right thing. Listen to those who voted for you. Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, the public comment period is closed and we will be moving on to the ordinance for introduction. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of the ordinance?
Yes. ID number 9734. An Ordinance of the City of Summit Amending the Redevelopment Plan for the Broad Street West Redevelopment Area.
Thank you. Councilmember, what, over there? Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. This is ordinance number 9734. The Broad Street West Redevelopment Plan was adopted by ordinance on May 7, 2019. As our redevelopment council, Joe Marazidi, has previously stated, it is a very common occurrence to amend a redevelopment plan. In fact, Mr. Marazidi has been involved in hundreds of redevelopment agreements and he was, quote, "hard-pressed to think of a situation where the redevelopment plan was not amended in order to achieve the ultimate construction of the project," close quote. This redevelopment plan may be amended from time to time in compliance with the requirements of New Jersey state law. So tonight, the City of Summit wishes to introduce an ordinance to amend the redevelopment plan dated June 2022. To start, the city is removing Lot 1 from Block 2702, which is the post office. In Sub District 2 and Sub District 4, the city is removing residential use from these sites, which is the parking lot between the YMCA and the Summit Public Library and the area around City Hall, respectively. In Sub District 3, there are several amendments as follows. Retail space will be reduced from 10,000 square feet to 8,500 square feet. The city is limiting Sub District 3 to 133 apartment units. Since there are no other apartments being considered in the other subdistricts, the entire redevelopment area is capped at 133. The next amendment is codifying the fifth story on the building. The listed height of 70 feet was already contemplated in the redevelopment plan. The parking amendment allows for sharing within the redevelopment area instead of parking insularly in each district. New on-street parking spaces can be anywhere within the redevelopment area or within a 250-foot walking distance as long as minimum parking requirements are still met. The parking plan that is part of the redevelopment agreement will designate permitted parking locations on Morris Avenue and Broad Street. There will be no parking on side streets. To be consistent with more traditional design for the proposed building, the minimum glazing or window percentages will be reduced from a range of 60% to 80% down to a range of 40% to 60%. On the pedestrian walkway along Broad Street, the city needs more flexibility in the pedestrian width standards. To allow for landscaping features to intrude into this area, the width will be reduced from 10 feet as long as a five-foot clearance is maintained. Finally, the side yard setback will be reduced from five feet to two feet to allow for an art walk or greenway between Cedar Street and Morris Landing. I want to close by saying that one of the clearly stated goals of the 2016 Master Plan Reexamination document was a need for redevelopment on Broad Street. If you haven't read the Master Plan Reexamination yet, I encourage you to do so. It is a very easy document to read and find on the city website. Kudos to the scores of community members who had a hand in that process, some of whom are here tonight. Broad Street West presents an opportunity to fill a need in the local housing market. That is, the convenience of living within walking distance of the Summit train station in our vibrant downtown where are, where there are fantastic restaurants, a wide variety of shops, places to work, and beautiful places to walk. By designating Broad Street as an area in need of redevelopment, it has allowed the city to maintain control over the type, quality, and quantity of the development. I want to stress how fortunate we are to be in a position to take advantage of this redevelopment opportunity in an underutilized and unattractive area close to downtown. This new pedestrian-friendly neighborhood will enhance what we already enjoy. I move this ordinance for hearing, which will be Tuesday, September 13, 2022.
So before, we get a second, I think there are a couple of council members who wanted to speak. Let's see, Councilmember Vartan, you wanted to, right?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. I think it's important to be extremely clear with everyone what this ordinance and then the resolution later being introduced tonight is and what it is not. Then I think we should be very clear with people about where we stand on the project overall. I will set out to do both briefly right now. First, this is an ordinance and a resolution to amend the redevelopment plan that was approved by council in 2019. It is not a change to the master plan. Master plan clearly outlines several goals that specifically prescribe that redevelopment of this area should be pursued. It is then required that the planning board determine whether that plan is consistent with the master plan. Second, this is a step that is required if changes to the redevelopment plan are being proposed. It's an opportunity for the planning board to determine whether it is still consistent. It is not something that we can or should move forward without. Whether you are for or against the project as proposed, I believe we should all want the planning board, who are essentially the guardians of the master plan, to weigh in and to do this as soon as possible. Third, this is an incredibly common occurrence. This is not rare or out of the realm of what is ordinary. It happens in almost every community that drafts a redevelopment plan. Fourth, this measure is to curtail the scope of the redevelopment area by removing part of it, capping the number of residential units. It is not an expansion of the redevelopment area, nor is it an expansion of potential uses of the redevelopment area. Fifth, this is an amendment to the redevelopment plan. This is not a binding contract with a redeveloper, nor is it a financial agreement. Sixth, and finally, this is the next step. It is not the final step. As has been outlined by the council president at the beginning, the hearing and voting on this redevelopment plan, the redevelopment agreement, and the financial agreement will not be taking place in the summer. Now, I will outline where I stand on the project overall. I believe it is our responsibility to continue along the path of redevelopment of this area. As it has been specifically prescribed in the master plan, it has long been recognized as a tremendous opportunity to meet several of the city's goals that fall into the buckets of the master plan, affordable housing, and the financial benefits. There are also a slew of questions that remain to be answered. I understand and recognize that the financial picture remains unclear. I believe it is our responsibility to provide all of the information, be fully transparent. And once we have done so, then we can feel comfortable moving forward with the redevelopment agreement and the financial agreement in the fall. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. Any other council members? Councilmember Allen?
Can you hear me okay? Okay. I just have a couple of quick questions. When will we receive the financial agreement?
We have the financial agreement, but council has it. It was attached to the redevelopment agreement draft.
But for the public to actually see it?
We are still working on it.
That is a draft, the financial agreement is still in process. It will not be completed until Mr. Powell completes his analysis and, and calculates what the, the details of that will be. So that, that's a document that will be voted on separately. That is also a document that requires the adoption of, of an ordinance to approve it. So once again, when it comes time for the financial agreement, there will be an introduction of the financial agreement at one meeting and a second reading public hearing at another. That, that document does not go to the planning board. That would be solely within the control of the governing body.
Okay, so let me just clarify my question. Sorry, it's really loud. Will it be before September 13?
No. It would, the anticipation would be that if the plan amendment is approved in September, following that, not that same night, wouldn't expect, would be a vote on the redevelopment agreement. And it could happen that at the same night, the financial agreement would be introduced, or that could happen sometime later. But the financial agreement would follow the approval of the redevelopment agreement, which would contain language that would say that the effectiveness of the redevelopment agreement is contingent upon the adoption of a financial agreement with certain key terms identified.
Okay. I guess I'm concerned about amending a plan. If we don't have a full financial picture, that everybody's going to.
I would point out that the amendment of the plan does not bind you to do anything. It simply provides the opportunity to go the next step if you choose to do it. It's not, it's not an inevitable. It's not an inevitable next step. It gives you the flexibility to do that. So if you adopt the redevelopment plan amendment, there's not a compulsion then to either adopt the redevelopment agreement nor to adopt the financial agreement. Those would still be independent decisions to be made by the governing body, subject to a vote at a public meeting.
So if anything falls through with Toll Brothers, we'll now have this new standing redevelopment document, though, right? And so that's the new negotiating tool for any developer that comes in.
That would be, once again, there would be a redevelopment plan that would provide that envelope within which you can negotiate. You can't go beyond those four corners of that redevelopment plan, but you're not bound to go to the limits of the plan either. That is the boundary. You can't go beyond, but you can certainly negotiate something lesser within those boundaries.
Okay. And then when do you perceive that, or think that we'll vote on the agreement between the city and Toll Brothers? When would that be public?
I'm guessing that sometime in the fall. We're still talking about that. That's not fixed in stone as to when that will be. The redevelopment agreement is still in the process of a draft, and we still have to iron out issues with respect to that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Just a couple more questions. I think Councilman Vartan is absolutely right. I think, I just, I really want to commend you, Council President. There have been a lot of hours spent on this, and you've taken a lot of questions, and you've taken a lot of time to get experts around the table. I've learned a lot in this process. Two speakers actually stood out to me tonight, and I didn't really plan on saying this, but Jonathan Betts had spoken about the four districts and how we would end up with a lot more development if we didn't amend our plan, and then, which made me take pause because I know we've discussed that. But I think that is a source of confusion, and that's a huge component to all of this. What does this really mean to all of us, to know that there are four districts that could potentially end up with more development? And then Allison Chifo had said that, it did strike me that when she showed us the recycling flyer, I know we've sent out the lock your key and your, you know, don't lock your key fob in your car flyer went out. I think we could take some onus on the fact that we could send out flyers to people, and we've had plenty of time since February. So I just, I wanted to acknowledge that. And, yeah. So I think I was going to be a no vote tonight because I was excited that I was not going to be a table to vote tonight because I was actually really thrilled to hear that you were willing to move to September. I think that that is definitely, we should acknowledge that, that you're listening and you want to try and do this the best you can for the community. So when I heard that it was going to be moved to September, it made me feel like we're really moving in the right direction. But I feel like after I've heard so many questions tonight and after Jonathan's statement about the development, and there's a lot of unanswered questions, I'm, and then finally, I'm sorry, when we discovered that the planning board could review this plan without us adopting this amendment or opening this hearing tonight, I think that that would be a reason for me to feel that we should just table this tonight, have them look at it, and we can pick this up in September. That would be my sentiment.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Council President. I want help. I have helped vote as to my deliberation. And what I have spent time trying to understand, the differences development plan, the redevelopment plan agreement, the redevelopment financial plan, the redevelopment plan amendment, and really understanding how they relate to one another, how they needed to be sequenced, and how the legal ramifications either guide us or restrict us. And so I have, I am a visual learner, and I have been mapping out how these things relate to one another, and I want to position that against what I have heard are the concerns from folks who have been out, the folks who have been writing. I want to say, colleagues have said, I am grateful for the input, the feedback and the dissent, because it helps us better. We have been elected, we have been voted on to be your eyes and ears regarding the decisions that we are making on the entire town's behalf. And the concerns that I hear over and over again are the density scale and size. I hear a concern, we want to go back to the beginning. We want to pause. We want to better understand. We want to be educated about this Broad Street West development. We, the concerns I've hear, we want improved communication. And I have heard, and this has bothered me a lot, I have heard the questioning of the expertise, competencies, and the capabilities of the experts and the staff and the council and the steering committee, who we have pointed to spend full time examining. That concern that I heard bothered me a lot because I feel some people are asking really good questions, and some people are just trying to prove that they know more than our staff, the council member, and when they say things like, "It's simple," I believe many people would agree with me that this is complex. And the fourth bucket is a really good question about the financial impact taxpayers and the city's budget. And so how have this council gone about addressing these concerns? And I relate that to these four buckets. I call them the redevelopment plan, the plan amendment, the financial, and the financial plan, and then the agreement. And I feel in terms of the density, scale, size, and we are pausing on the agreement, that is where that can be addressed. And when you ask us to pause, what I hope you understand is pausing doesn't exist for us. We are continuing to work, and we have made the decision to postpone it until September. And that is the agreement. In terms of the concern about the financial impact on taxpayers, that's the redevelopment financial plan that we just heard our expert say, the sequence of it comes after the agreement, which we told you would not happen until the fall. And so I heard the question, why not just send it to the planning board without this process of boarding? And our expert, who I do believe in and trust, no others have not, has said you could do that, but I don't recommend it. So I am listening to our expert. The one area that really made me want to vote no is we have fallen down and not done our obligation to communicate about Broad Street West, about this plan, about the amendment, about the financial plan and agreement. We have not done that, and that's what made me want to vote no. But what has made me change my mind in the absence of our not doing that well, we have left it to people to communicate it, who are not giving you the correct information. And so that is why I am wanting to vote yes, and I support this ordinance that will allow us, because we are not pausing, our experts are not pausing, and our work on the items that you have expressed matter most to us, we still have that opportunity to work on as is the legal requirement for us to have the planning board, who are our experts, weigh in with the boundaries that go along with them, the 45-day period, and we have made the commitment to not vote July 19. And so the competition that exists is do you pause and be accused of not being transparent because you're working on it without talking about it publicly? Or do you risk with being transparent, appearing as if we're indecisive, we're not making wise decisions, experts don't know what they're talking about? As we take in many things that you all have raised that conflict with one another, that's why you pay us the extra $5 to work those things out. And so I am in favor of approving this ordinance so we can do a better job of communicating and educating our residents. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. So with that, I think we're ready for a second.
I second.
Okay, so could we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Allen?
I make a motion to table.
If you want to make a motion to table.
Ms. Allen?
I make a motion to table the hearing.
Is there a second on tabling? Okay, there is no second, so we'll go ahead and take the roll call vote.
Ms. Allen?
Nay.
Ms. Hairston?
Yes.
Ms. Little?
Yes.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Yes.
Motion carries, so the hearing will be on...
Have a good night.
And now we have one resolution. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID #9733, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Summit referring a proposed amendment of the Broad Street West redevelopment plan to the planning board of the City of Summit pursuant to NJSA 40A 12A-7, and also to the planning of the County of Union pursuant to NJSA 4027-6.10. As I previously discussed, all of the amendments, this resolution will formalize referral to the City of Summit Planning Board. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Are there any comments from members of council?
Councilmember Allen?
I know everybody's gone, and I'll make this quick. I just want, I wrote a speech for tonight. Over the last six months, there's been significant engagement regarding Broad Street West redevelopment. At our council meeting on June 15, residents came to listen to our experts and voiced their opposition to the City of Summit's intention to amend the redevelopment plan. My guess, it was definitely the longest meeting in the history of Summit, and I commend Council President Fox for navigating that, and it shows what an important issue this is to our residents. The vast majority of residents have not spoken out against developing. The vast majority of residents have not spoken out against building affordable housing. Our residents are simply asking us to follow our current redevelopment plan that we already have in place. The current redevelopment plan is a result of significant public input. It was written fairly recently, in 2019, by dedicated city staff, elected officials, and various Summit community volunteers who took great pride in ensuring that Summit continue to be a charming city within a framework that stayed true to our character. In February 2022, we voted for the letter of intent. I did so because it was a non-binding legal agreement to allow the city to share and discuss aspects of the Broad Street West redevelopment plan. Without the LOI in place, the level of information that the public has seen to date would not have been possible, and I feel like it's our responsibility as elected officials to ensure maximum public engagement. One of our city professionals has stated that redevelopment plans only work if they are financially successful. That is part of the reason tonight where I took pause. Based on our deliberation over the last several months, I'm still not clear if this plan is going to be financially a good deal for our town. It may be a great deal, but I'm just not comfortable tonight saying that it is, and I'm not going to gamble our redevelopment plan and our Summit future on the unknown. I know extraordinary time and energy has gone into this project. I know intentions on this council are good, and I've seen a lot of hard work come from this, working with them. For me, good questions have been raised by the public, and again, I feel it's our responsibility to continue vetting them. There were a lot of questions tonight. I don't think we have to vet them forever, just until we get some questions answered. Another item I'd like to mention that we haven't discussed are the concerns from the Historic Preservation Commission. They raised legitimate red flags regarding the project's size and length of the building and how it would impact the historical character of our downtown. These are commissioners that we appointed, and I feel that we've ignored some of their apprehensions. I also don't believe our current redevelopment plan is flawed in any way, and once we amend it, it is final. And so whether it's Toll Brothers or whoever comes in, if anything changes, I feel like we have now moved ourselves into a direction where it establishes a new precedent that can reach into every corner of our community, and it may invite more high-density housing in other parts of town that we know could be vulnerable, like the Selgin, you know, East Campus. And once we change our redevelopment plan and our current zoning laws, we move into a different direction. If we amend this plan, we're sending a message, I feel as though if we amend this plan, we're going to be sending a message to all our volunteers who have been involved over the last 20 years, including the master and the redevelopment plan, and saying that the hours that they've spent volunteering for Summit to ensure these documents were put in place to help maintain the character of our town, we have basically said that once government knows best, government does what it does because it wants to. And I just, I feel like, I know we've tried very hard, we've had a lot of deliberation, but I just, this is where my head is at. One last thing I do want to say, that we've all lived in Summit a long time, and many in this room who have left tonight, we have, and my colleagues on this dais, you know, we are friends, we are neighbors, we've all volunteered together, and I feel like we're all connected by one degree of separation. And I... And I really appreciate that, I don't think there's anything improper. I think everyone's trying to do the right thing. And so my feelings on this project does not minimize the professionalism and the hard work that everybody has put into this. So I think that that's an important statement. I don't want to burn down the house simply by voting no tonight. I've tried to be very respectful of my relationships with my colleagues and balance that with the relationship with our public. It's been said that redevelopment is hard, but I honestly don't think it has to be hard. I think we have a plan, we have a framework, and we can work within that. And again, you know, I hear that leadership is about doing hard things, but I think leadership is about doing the right thing and ensure that we create a space where people feel heard, which I think we've, we've, we've done, but also create an environment where everybody trusts us, that government is making credible decisions. That's what, to me, we've talked about representative government, that's what representative government means to me. Creating a space for people to know, to trust us that we're making the correct decisions, and having a financial plan as part of this discussion to make sure everything is together all at once would be a much better approach. So last thing, Summit's character is a fabric. You know, Summit's characters come up a lot. It, to me, it's fabric. It embodies our quaint downtown, our diversity, our benevolent spirit, and a suburban town, downtown with an urban-esque feel. So I know, I've lived all over the country, and I have found a wonderful home in Summit, and I don't think there are many places like it. So I think we're all trying to move in the right direction. We'll get there, and thank you for running a good meeting tonight, Council President.
Can I just say thank you, Councilwoman Allen, for your thoughts and comments, and I know you respect the process and we all respect you. But a lot of what you talked about has to do with the redevelopment agreement, not the plan, which you're voting on tonight. So I just want to make sure, or you voted already, but this is the vote, the resolution to go to the planning board. I just want to reassure you that much of what you are concerned about will be discussed with, among us, with the public. That's why we're pushing the vote and off, on the redevelopment agreement off until sometime in the fall, because there are things to get through, and the financial agreement comes, it is continuing to be negotiated, and it will happen, but not until we've finalized the redevelopment agreement. And much of what you just said and you're concerned about will be addressed in the summer and fall to come.
Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President, and I probably just want to echo what Mayor Rades says, that what has troubled me the most is we are using the terms interchangeably, redevelopment plan and redevelopment agreement and the redevelopment amendment and the redevelopment financial plan. We've been using them interchangeably, and there is a huge difference between four important documents that guide us. And I did want to read the goals, and there were a couple of folks, and I, the old man, Daniel Sullivan, who said, "Please read the plan. Read the plan because it is very digestible, even the kind of information." And what, if you wouldn't mind, Council President, I want to read the nine goals that we heard someone say, the number one goal was to preserve the, the character of Summit. That was not the number one goal, and it was to promote economic development, it is to create pedestrian-friendly spaces, to design, provide quality, usable, open space, to ensure civic engagement, to pursue equitable development, and the sixth one was to encourage architecture that is characteristic of Summit, to design and incorporate environmental and energy consciousness, to implement sustainability, and lastly, number nine, to reduce the negative impact of cars and traffic. Who would vote against a plan that puts all of those goals forward? Now, my God, how are we going to be held accountable to doing all of those things? And what I heard Councilmember Allen raise are those concerns that all of the council has. And officially starting the process by approving the amendment, resolution allows us to tackle these goals and build in accountability through these different documents that guide us. So I just want to correct the record that what are the goals? That this between the master plan and the redevelopment plan, redevelopment agreement, these, these goals bind. So thank you extended.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Are there any other comments? Okay. Comments from the public? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Oh, you want a roll call vote?
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Ms. Allen?
Nay.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries, and now I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting's adjourned.